James, does that get you what you need?
All right, we are live streaming on YouTube and then that's also being put onto the school committee website. I will call us to order at 7:03. Sarah Fox, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so I will waste no time in scooting along with our agenda. So John, we are here tonight for a learning model update.
And an exciting update it will be. It is a step that I think collectively, we have all been looking forward to being able to take and to return us to a sense of normalcy in a word that has been being defined month by month, sometimes moment by moment. But I think that this is an evening to celebrate the collective good work that we have done. And so I want to share my screen and take you through some of the good stuff that we're able to talk about tonight. So why are we proposing expanding in-person learning now? I think it's clear as we have learned more about COVID and some of the impacts that it has had educationally and in social emotional health. The advantages of in-person learning for students are seen in each of those realms, the academic, the social, emotional, physical. There's improving public health data around COVID. If you think back to where we were in September or August, when we released our initial reopening plans and why we went with our hybrid plan. Much of the public health data and information and knowledge of the virus has changed since that time. I think that our mitigation efforts have proven very effective. We've had no in-school transmissions. And I know that that's something that all of our building principals, our nurses, our faculty celebrate. Vaccinations came online. And so that opens the possibility for increasing the number of in-person students in the buildings. And pool testing, which you will have an update on at the Thursday meeting being picked up by Project Beacon, which I know is a welcome news to many people in the community. And Amanda Rivers has put together a presentation on that that we're going to post. So anyone that has any lingering questions about pool testing and what Project Beacon will be able to offer us. And then she'll give a brief update to you Thursday as well. Another question that might be on people's minds is why is it possible to consider this expansion in learning time now? Back in August, it was very important to families across the district that the cohorts were aligned. That parents that had children in different schools were not being asked to go on different days at different times according to different schedules. And so that cohort alignment was important. Our initial cohort numbers in August, September are dramatically different than they are now. And so we have had over 100 changes in cohorts, either people going remote to hybrid or hybrid to remote since September. Transmission rates have dramatically changed. If you think of where we were in November to January, the precipitous spike that we saw in zero to 19 cases, Marblehead was a red community for a week in January. Knowledge of transmission. I'm sure I don't have to remind school committee that we were spending $30,000 a week in cleaning because we worried that if somebody touched a surface, that could be transmission. And so the idea of bringing more students into the building, even in the cohort model, people were worried about, well, will they be sitting in a desk where a cohort A student had sat the day before? And it might seem silly right now to think of that stuff, but at the time, that was our knowledge and understanding of COVID. And so we use the science and the data available to us at that time to make decisions. Openness to increasing numbers in the building and the amount of time in buildings. I know Sarah Fox is on the Teaching and Learning Committee. In December, I directed NAN to ask Teaching and Learning, how can we bring more students into the buildings? Or how can we increase the amount of time students are in the buildings? NAN came back to me and said that meeting was a disaster. People were literally in tears at the thought of trying to bring more students into the buildings or for longer periods of time. We made a decision then to go three days remote before the holiday break. And then the week returning from holiday break to do that as remote. Along the way, everybody doing the best that they could, given the information at hand. The information that we have now is it is safe to bring students back in the buildings. And with the numbers that we have, we can assure in K to six that six-foot distancing, where in earlier months, we were not able to do that, or people weren't willing to do that. Either the numbers changed or people's willingness. Well, I would like to go to the next slide. All right. So just to take you back to the decision-making dashboard that we have been using along the way. I think you see that sometimes our ability to safely staff the buildings was a question for us. It hasn't been since November 30th where our positivity rate was a two-point something. This past week, it was 2.23. Another indicator that the metrics we follow says we will attempt to increase in-person learning should those things that are listed there be in place. And so no evidence of in-school transmission. We haven't seen that. Marblehead in yellow status, the zero to 19 case rate, local hospital capacity, staffing levels at green, or a new unforeseen impact dynamic that has not yet developed, which it has not. So what I'm proposing this evening is that our students K to six in the current hybrid shift to five half-days of in-person learning. They would come in Monday through Friday. I say eight to 12, very well aware that different buildings have different start and end times. But just as in four-hour increments. That would be combining cohort A and B into one cohort. I'm proposing Monday, March 1st as an anticipated start date for K to three. And Monday, March 8th as an anticipated start day for four to six. This does not impact our students in remote learning. And despite the governor and the commissioners announcements today, I think we're focused on Marblehead and what we're able to do here, given what's happening in our community and allow Beacon Hill and Malden to make their proclamations, knowing that they have been making them along the way to pivot then to local control. So my focus continues to be on Marblehead and what we're able to do here. So students. Okay, students in seven to 12. You will hear the building principals talk tonight. We cannot do six-foot distancing in the middle school, high school. I think I was clear about that in the February 4th meeting, that the high school, middle school piece would be more complicated. And so they will talk this evening to you about an AM/PM cohort model where students would be in five days a week. And so I won't steal their thunder. And then we continue to have conversations with MEA and their negotiation renegotiation conversations about the six-foot distancing. So some of the things that come into play when you have a decision of this magnitude are operational. And Sarah Gold and I had good conversation today with MEA talking about some of these pieces, reconfiguring the classrooms, that the way classrooms look, there will be students literally lined up against bookcases or up against the front of the room in order to combine the cohorts into a single classroom. That may require outfitting with appropriate furniture because they have some furniture that will have to be removed from classrooms. As great teachers do, they brought things back into classrooms in the current cohort model. Esels and bookcases and storage containers that will have to be removed so that we can combine the cohorts and maintain that six-foot distancing. Technology, some classrooms have smart boards and the way that we would configure with that many students and maintaining the distancing might mean access to technology is impacted. Pedagogy is certainly impacted in the way that teachers are able to teach. We'll have to take into consideration the number of students in the room and their ability to do certain things. Then just logistics, drop-off and pickup. It's different when you have 100 students as opposed to 200 students and preparing for inclement weather, bathrooms and hallways. You're doubling the number of people in buildings. So how will that impact things like bathroom and hallways? Specials, art, music, PE, media center. How, what do those look like? How are those taught? So those are conversations happening at the building level with principals and their staff. And then breaks, snack and mask break with double the number of students in. That's something that principals are working through with teachers. So some quick, frequently asked questions or facts about what is happening. Has this proposal been shared with teachers? And I only pause because. And other MPS staff? Yes. I met with faculty and staff yesterday as a district announcement. And I continue to learn about the progression of information in this district. I think you will, Megan and Sarah can talk about reopening, where a parent said, I learned of something through my third grade student. And teachers feel that parents hear about it first and parents feel that they're hearing about it from their students. And so teachers expressed in surveys that they felt they wanted to be in receipt of information like this prior to it being publicly launched. And so I met with faculty and staff yesterday to share this information. Does this shift compromise six-foot distancing K to six? No, it does not. Can a family request a student's current learning model? I'm saying now, after meeting with the leadership team, not immediately. And I think again, Sarah Fox, in being in Teaching and Learning, you know how delicate the balance is for our capacity to have students shift from remote or hybrid. And fortunately, we have two pivot points coming up. March 12th will be the trimester for our K to six learners. And April 1st will be the beginning of quarter four for vets in the high school. But when this goes into implementation, it is based on the numbers that we have right now. So the numbers of students in cohort B, cohort A, cohort B, and remote learning. We will not be able to make that transition overnight if there are people in hybrid that don't feel comfortable and want to go to remote or remote that have been, I chose remote because I wanted five days of continuous instruction. But now that I can get that in person, I want to make that move. So I'm not saying that it's not possible, but the immediacy of it, I think, in listening to building principals, they need time to anticipate these changes. And so those pivot points might play an important part of that conversation. What about students in seven to 12? That is being developed and negotiated, as I've alluded to, and Matt and Dan will certainly give you more information at the building level. And does this impact fully remote students? No, it does not. This does not have impact on our fully remote. And so with that, I will either pause for questions or allow principals to talk about the building level and what that will look like at each school.
I'm inclined to have the principal speak first.
Okay, so first up, we have Donna Zaskin at Evolith and Village 3rd Grade.
Donna, you're muted.
Muted, Sarah.
Okay, am I good now?
And so is Donna, I can't.
I think everyone can hear me. So welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Evolith School. Most of you probably know this. It's a great little school, six classrooms. At the start of the year, we had near 90 kids. Right now, we're sitting in the mid-60s. So we've lost a few students this year as we have at many of the grade levels. Because it has such a simple layout and the fact that each classroom has a doorway that goes to the outdoors. Getting the kids in and out of the building, arrival and dismissal, all year long has gone very smoothly. I don't anticipate any big hurdles with that as we have all the kids join together. As far as you know, I think we should just spend one second in talking about some of the things that have been accomplished this year. We started out, as everyone knows, there was lots of anxiety about teaching, teaching remotely, all these things that we started way back in September. And our teachers have really worked hard to, you know, learn applications, learn things like CSO and Clever and Google Classroom, both at Evolith and 3rd Grade. There was a steep learning curve. And I think after we went through these different models of instruction, each one brought a different challenge, but certainly I feel like we definitely rose to the occasion and our kids are performing really well at this point. I want the community to know that our assessment scores are right where they should be. They're right on target. Our kids are doing really well at the lower level. 3rd Grade also is doing awesome. So I wanted to kind of give credit to our teaching staff for that. Also, the staff that came from Bell and how we all got mixed up. You know, we started out last year with the move out of Bell, divided it between three places. Then by the end of last year, we were in the COVID thing. And now this year, it's been another COVID experience. So I just feel that the teachers have really worked hard over these last two years to meet all the demands and the challenges that we face. And I'm proud of the accomplishments that we have made. So now we are at the point, as John mentioned, of looking at next steps and bringing the cohorts together five days a week. The daily schedule will not be any different. For example, the start and end times will remain the same. The afternoon sessions for kindergarten will be voluntary. We are thinking with the kids in five days a week. And it being a more structured kind of a learning environment that that will be a little bit taxing on those young learners, at least in the beginning. So the afternoon sessions, we will certainly have instruction, maybe some small groups, maybe it'll be some enhanced or targeted skill sets that kids need to work on with their teachers. But those things will be scheduled as we go. The right now, as far as what we've done to prepare, we have changed the classrooms around a bit. Everybody has been working through that since they've heard even the first day on Monday, thinking about how to be creative in their classrooms. I have had a chance, as John mentioned, we all met with the teachers after John's meeting yesterday. So Dr. Satterfield and I met with the Evolith, the Coffin, and the 3rd Grade at Village together. Partly because that whole school is going to be a whole school next year. And we decided to approach it that way. And as far as Village is concerned, again, hats off to Mandy Murphy because, you know, she gave us some of the bigger classrooms in the school. She kept us all together. And it's looking like she's going to try to keep doing that, which would be, you know, hardly any changes for 3rd Grade, other than the kids coming back to school. So the custodians have been busy measuring rooms, you know, everything isn't exactly perfect at Village. I think that, you know, it has so much more diversity as far as the building is concerned itself, which creates a little more challenges. But again, Mandy and I have worked really closely together and almost everything that comes up, we problem solve it and move on to the next step, the next challenge. So we're excited to have the kids back, of course, and looking forward to that next change. Who's next, John?
Next up, we'll have Dr. Satterfield.
Thank you, John. I just want to say, I'm just, Sarah, do you have a question?
I wonder if we should ask questions by speaker? Or do you want to wait and bring everybody back at the end?
I was thinking of bringing everybody back at the end. And what do you guys think?
Yeah, let's run through. It'd be my preference.
Yeah, I agree.
Go ahead, Sean.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, yeah, it's funny that Donna mentioned about the transition because I think that is probably the biggest thing, at least for me, and I think our staff as well, is really the resiliency. When this came up out of the fly, there's been a lot of discussions, of course, but once we kind of knew there was a hard date, the teachers were a little surprised, anxious, but then they really kind of hit the ground running. When we closed Gary School and the children moved to Lower Bell, and then they moved over to Evolith, and we had the Bell teachers for two years. They're really kind of used to running through these kind of things and not just standing still. And I'm really proud of the kind of things that our teachers have done over the past couple of years and the three years, really, with the multiple transitions that we've had. They've, they've, they've really come out on top. I'm going to echo a lot of what Donna said. We were in a good place with the hybrid as far as the students' assessments going. But we really do need to have the students come in the building and we're excited about doing that. The past month or so, we've had a number of students that have gone to five days, not just special needs or the early learning, but some of the other ones that are, that are struggling. And I've had many teachers come to me the past few weeks and say, you know, so-and-so child, they really need to be full day or five days, I'm sorry. Can we have them come in? And just about every single time, if we can make it happen, we've made it happen. So I'm really excited to have all the students come in five, five days a week till 12:15. It'll be a fantastic experience, I think, for the children. But it'll be an adjustment for them as well. One of the things that we mentioned yesterday in our meetings was it's almost going to be like a first day of school once again for the children coming in. It'll be first day of school for the teachers. They're going to have to relearn procedures, anything from what recess is going to look like to hallway walking, to snack time, to having children maybe that they haven't seen since last fall in the classroom with them, which will be a new experience. So it'll almost be like a first day of school. And that's how we're asking the teachers to approach it. As far as the teachers go, again, that's going to be an adjustment for them as well, a good one, I think, but realizing again that they're going to be having a full classroom full of students that they haven't had in a year. And that we're going to have to do some more shifting as far as the facility and rooms go in terms of furniture. I spent quite a bit of time today, this afternoon, with custodians and with the teachers and going through the classrooms and moving desks around and moving shelves and bookcases and things like that so we can fit the children. It's a challenge, but as I said, it's something that I think we can do and the teachers are really pretty much excited about having the children in and being able to see them firsthand every day. Teaching is going to look a little bit different because we have the children spread out. It's six-foot distancing, of course, in rows, all the way back from one quarter of the classroom to another. And as John mentioned earlier, that does make a bit of a challenge with some of the technology that we use. But those are all kind of workarounds that we can, we can we can kind of work through it once we have the children in the building. It's, it'll be different, but I think it'll be a good difference. Once we kind of get rolling into it and make some adjustments on the flies, once we have the children in the building, I think it'll be, it'll be a positive. And I just want to thank the teaching staff again for really kind of, as they've done so many times in the past, just, just coming up to the plate and really knocking it out. The other school committee, you were talking about people knocking it out of the park. And I'm sure without a doubt, our staff at all three, all three of our buildings, including Donna's buildings, that they're just going to, they're just going to fly with it. And it's going to be a fantastic experience.
Thank you, Dr. Satterfield. Mr. Oda. You're muted, Mr. Oda.
Okay, there we go. Under the current hybrid models, our students are making strong academic performance. Despite doing well academically, under the current hybrid model, we came to understand that some students are feeling isolated and are experiencing social, emotional problems. As educators, our staff recognize that our job is to teach the whole student, both academically and socially emotionally. With our academic process, progress well in place, was time to open up other avenues of opportunity. The plan to increase our students' live learning time by returning to school for five learning days a week as seamless and as transparent as possible. To accomplish this task, we're going to use the cohort A model. Students will attend classes from 8:05 to 12:15, Monday through Friday. They will log out for lunch at 12:15 and return to attend remote classes from 1:30 to 2:30 on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, Wednesday. Wednesday will be the same as it is currently. Teachers will be using that as planning time and to work with their cohorts from across the district. As Dr. Bucky had stated previously, there are a lot of challenges that we're working on, uh, tomorrow in our staff meeting to find solutions for some of these things. With six foot spacing, that means the classrooms are basically desks and chairs. It will be difficult to use the smart boards and the easels that we have been using. So the teachers are now working to figure out how to do instruction under these new conditions. There are questions on how Allied Arts are going to be able to do their work within the classrooms with six foot spacing. I know that the Special Education Department, under Dr., um, Oxford are working now to make sure that all of the inclusion students and program students get the services that they're required. And then, as Dr. Bucky also pointed out, there are a lot of logistical, simple things that we have to figure out, such as now with the introduction of the whole school coming back, we have instead of a hundred kids here and there, it's going to become two hundred to three hundred kids coming back at the same time. That means our drop off pickup lines have to be changed. Our snack and recess breaks have to be, uh, re-coordinated to make sure that everything is done safely with the students. The Glover School is extremely creative and very professional, and will address these challenges as we did last March. And as we're doing since the beginning of the year, I am confident Glover staff will be able to provide the services that our students are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oda. This is Murphy.
I got concerned that maybe you didn't want me to speak, Dr. Bucky. Um, I'm going to start with the positives really quickly. Um, we've had some really positive things happening this year, and I know as we look towards the next step, it's just important to note that the hybrid model gave us small group instruction. Um, teachers built relationships with their students. So now when we're looking at bringing the whole class of students in, they've already built relationships with those small groups on both sides of the cohort. So that's been really nice. The curriculum pacing has been on par with last year. Our aims, our aims web data, as everybody else has already shared, um, shows that we're right on target with the curriculum for where we were last year. So that's been really nice. Our discipline has been at an all time low, um, and in-class disruptions, enabling students to be more focused in class. So as we discussed, the possibility of bringing back students five days a week, it's important to reflect on what's gone well and what will change and improve. So it will be nice to plan lessons for just one group of students, not planning for remote and hybrid, uh, in person at the same time. And our major goal will be to focus on bringing back students, um, and bringing, and focusing on their social emotional wellbeing and education. We'll be reteaching routines, procedures, rules, uh, and schedule. I've already got Mr. Gallo and Mr. Newsom working on a video to review spacing, proper mask wearing, mask breaks, um, all the fun procedural stuff. Things that we're planning for, uh, we will have to collect information from families, as Dr. Bucky noted before, um, that may help us impact less movement around the building. So we may, um, be able to use those changes to our, or those notes of change from parents and to our advantage here at Village School. Our overall structure, as everybody has said, our schedule will remain pretty much the same. It will just be that both cohorts will be live in the building together. So we'll have eight to twelve, a break for lunch. They'll have independent work at home, and then they'll be attending, uh, class remotely from one fifteen to two fifteen. We've found that our advisory program has worked out really well this year, so we're going to keep that in the remote portion of the afternoon, uh, furthering that connection between our remote students and our in-person students. So some of the things that we're, that we've found are working well, we'll, we'll be able to keep consistent as we move towards these next changes. We'll adjust small pieces in our schedule so that Allied Arts classes are added into the in-person days as opposed to the remote days. And we'll be diligently looking at space, as everybody else has already noted. Uh, we'll be reutilizing classrooms in the building to allow for more space. Currently, we have fourteen class lists that have greater than twenty students in them. So for fifth and sixth grade, this may mean a team of forty students or greater. We'll move teachers, um, and students so that students are, that are in a class of greater than twenty students have the larger classrooms in the building. This means classes in grade six may be in a hallway with grade four, and classes in grade five may be in a hallway with grade four or six. So areas such as the auditorium and band room have been used for shared teaching spaces right now, where we have remote tutors or other people. We may be repurposing those into, uh, reassigning them as primary classroom spaces. This is a process that's been happening throughout the year at Village School, as we adjust schedules and maximize time on learning. For example, we've moved remote teachers into office spaces and we've, so that we can move inclusion teachers to have the larger classrooms for students that are in person. So these are changes that have been happening throughout the way. It's just a bigger change. And as we know, change is always something that you look at, how do we maximize and use this to the best of our ability? So the physical space will be reimagined, as Dr. Bucky mentioned. We'll be using, it will really be allowing for teacher desks, uh, will be removed from the classroom so that students have desks in the classroom wall to wall. Bookshelves will be moved to the hallways so that students can still access those independent reading books and other items that they may need. Um, and students may be close to the whiteboard, but thinking creatively, uh, we may have students bring in their own devices, or we may be utilizing Apple TVs paired with iPads, um, or other technology needs so that we can, uh, not worry about having to use projectors. So thinking creatively on that piece. We've already purchased rolling whiteboards so that when the weather's warmer, students may go outside for outdoor learning. I'm really hoping that it gets warm soon. So if you have questions at the end, I'm happy to answer any more questions that might be specific to Village School.
I actually think we'll pause there for questions because we're sort of talking about bringing K to six back and then other issues with seven to twelve. So let's, uh, let's go for some questions at this point. Who wants to kick it off?
I will.
Okay, go ahead, Meg.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. Yeah. Um, so I guess first of all, I just want to say thank you. Um, you know, when we, in our last school committee meeting, this is what we asked for. Um, John, from you and from the leadership team and from the teachers, so, um, you delivered and I appreciate that. Um, I think Donna and Bo, and Sean really highlighted some examples of the learning curve that, you know, our teachers and our students have had to contend with. And I think, you know, everyone's kind of done that. Um, really, but just an amazing job with it, um, around, across the board. So, um, I do appreciate that this might be a quick turnaround for teachers, since they just came back after break on Monday. Um, and from what we've heard here, there is, you know, quite a bit of logistical pieces that need to be worked out. Never mind the physical pieces. Um, so I, I do appreciate that that might seem at least a little bit overwhelming for teachers. And I just want to acknowledge that, you know, this is less than, you know, a week that we're asking them to kind of make a a significant change to how they've been working for the past six months. So, um, I think that's an important part. Um, I do have some specific questions. Where did I put all my notes? Um, so because of those logistical issues, um, I'm happy with the March first date to get K through three in. Um, I guess if everyone's on board with that, then I think that that's a great start date. Um, Mandy alluded to maybe some videos that were going to be done. Um, I'm just wondering if that's something that you're planning to do across the board for all buildings and students, just to prepare them? Because it will be a change from what they are used to at this point. Um, and for parents too, because obviously parents can't go into the classroom. So is that something you're planning to do across the board?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a timeline for that? Again, I know it's a quick turnaround, so.
Yeah. I think, uh, building principals, we talked about this during the leadership retreat last week, that because this will be a significant change, giving students and families an opportunity to see in reality, what a classroom will look like. And so principals are already working on that.
Okay, so we can expect that maybe this week, before they start on Monday?
If they start on Monday, yes.
Okay.
I think that's part of the conversation this evening, and each of the principals, and I've alluded to the logistics of this. I would like a March first, but I would like for it to be successful when it launches. And so that's the calculus right now is, uh, and you've heard me say this multiple times, just because we can, should we? And we can start March first, but we can probably start more successfully March eighth or wait until that quarter change at the K to six or the trimester change for K to six. Um, we can do anything. Because this is a major change, I want to make sure it's successful. And so I think in hearing from each of the principals, um, that in hearing from teachers, they're going to hit the ground running, they're going to do exactly what they did last March and make that major shift. But if we could give them a little extra time to make sure that they can operate in the classrooms, uh, with the increased number of students, I think that would be well received.
I can piggyback on that from the meeting with MEA earlier today, that that was a really strong sentiment, um, that I took away, just how much they would appreciate, uh, more time, that what, you know, that they take their craft very seriously, that they want to be prepared for their students to come in. And they feel that additional time, particularly from the first, um, again, like John said, whether it's the eight, I think the hope is from them, I think the hope was the fifteenth after the trimester break. Um, but that's to be determined. Um, so, you know, the, the more time is better for them.
Okay, so is that something that we want to make a call on, or is that something that you're going to make a call on? Like, how do we kind of proceed with that?
Uh, I think that the, I had this conversation with another school committee member today, that that has been a bit of a moving target, that we started in September by school committee approving the cohort model. And then when we did a deviation from that and went to a full remote week, the belief or the understanding was that that should have been a school committee decision. And so as we're making this major change to collapsing the two cohorts into one, I wanted to make sure that if it were a school committee decision, you had the ability to make that decision or to direct me as the superintendent to make that decision.
Okay. So, do you, Sarah, do you want us to just kind of, kind of continue with our questions and come back to this? Is that the best approach? Okay. All right, fair enough. So thank you. Um, so can we talk about the Wednesday? Um, because I think Brian mentioned that if I heard it right, Wednesday would still, the Wednesday afternoon would still be a non-school time or an asynchronous school time for students. Is that across the board?
Um, I would ask Brian to speak to that for the Glover School, because I did not know that to be across the board.
Yes.
I mean, I might have heard it wrong, sorry. If that's the case.
Do you want? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yes, um, we have been planning to use the same Wednesday afternoon um, as a planning period that we have been using since the beginning of the school year. As, instead of having asynchronous classes in the afternoon, we were planning on using it for teacher planning time. Uh, it's when they get together with the cohorts from the other elementary schools. Um, they meet, uh, in the afternoon, and then they go back to their own, uh, professional learning communities and continue the planning for the week.
And under this model, you're dramatically increasing the face-to-face time on learning from, um, the structured learning time minimum of the state. So they will have forty hours of in-person over that two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, I guess, um, my question's more around consistency across all of the elementary grades so that, you know, it's not, we're not doing one thing at one school and, and something different at the other schools. So I guess that would be, that would be my suggestion anyways, to make sure that that's consistent for everybody. Okay. Um, I think those are my major questions right now. Thank you.
Sarah Fox?
Um, I'm happy to let Emily go. I hopefully will get rid of my background noise in that meantime.
Okay, go ahead, Emily.
Um, so just to, um, emphasize what Megan said, thank you for this awesome announcement and exciting news. And, um, I think there's going to be a lot of happy children in Marblehead when they find out about this. Um, I did have a couple of questions also. So, um, at Glover, they're doing the afternoon remote session. And I didn't hear that if the Village third grade and the Coffin third grade were going to have that afternoon session as well. I did hear that at Evolith, um, it was voluntary, but just for, uh, one through three. Will they have that same remote every day or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And Wednesday would continue, continue to be the professional development.
Right, okay. Um, and then I think another, this is more like a comment. So Mandy said how they're pairing technology with the whiteboard issues because kids will be right, um, underneath it. So I think if other schools want to use those ideas, I think that's great to have kids bring in their own devices or use some of the iPads that we have as a way to see. So I'm sure that's all being shared, but I think that's a great idea to kind of help with that, um, issue. So thanks for the, being creative and thinking outside of the box on all these ideas. So thank you to everybody, and that's, that's it.
All right, Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, um, I apologize to still have my little visitor, who's, you might hear in the background. Um, so I, I, I have, you know, probably a lot more questions than I think we've had so far. Um, so I thought I heard Mandy say, in order to accommodate, the teachers will no longer have a desk in the classroom. Um, so they can't really stand and walk around the classroom, and they're not going to have a desk. So how, how are we going to facilitate them doing what they need to do?
I'm going to answer that, John.
Sure.
So, um, in order to fit the student desks in the room, the teachers have large desks. They won't be able to have that there. Uh, we're going to look creatively at maybe standard desks that teachers have because they're going to need some sort of teaching tool off of that. Um, a lot of our teachers already wander the classroom anyway, but they will need a spot to have as their own. So we're looking at those specific spaces that are a little bit smaller to figure out what that might look like, whether it's a smaller desk. We were meeting with the custodians and talking about that today. Um, if it's a smaller desk, or if it's a stand-up desk, or, uh, something else that we can provide for them to have.
If, if they're wandering the classroom and we're six feet, that right there, we've checked that cumulative fifteen minutes for the day, if you have a positive case, and now we have a quarantine teacher. Um, so that, that's a concern. Um, and then you talked about with the whiteboards needing to use possibly some creative technology. And I, I, I continue to be amazed by the, the learn, the time these teachers will put into learning new platforms or ways to teach to make this work. Um, but with our tech infrastructure being what it is, do we really feel we can handle, I mean, we're crashing a lot now with half the student load. Do we feel we can handle the full student load in there now with everybody possibly with a device so that they can see what they would be seeing on a whiteboard?
So these are conversations that I've just started to happen. I pulled a technology person into my room today. We wrote a grant a few years, a few years back at Village for iPads and the Apple TVs. Um, I think PTO helped out with that as well. So we have those pieces, some of those pieces in some of the classrooms in order to do that. So we're just starting that conversation, um, and then we'll follow through with teachers trying to, to problem solve that piece.
Okay, because I know we do have limits, severe limitations of our tech infrastructure right now. Um, my next question is the elephant in the room. I was on teaching and learning, and at countless meetings, if not every single meeting, we talked about, how do we get these students back in? Would these students need to be back in? And our hurdle was always six feet. And I heard every principal say they measured these rooms and that they just couldn't, couldn't make it work. Um, so I think the elephant in the room is, why does it suddenly work? Um, and I'm sure there's an answer, but I'm only asking it because I know it's a community concern. So I figured, let's ask it now, people can get an answer versus a public comment when we can't get some answers. So if each principal could speak to what the element is that changed that makes it possible now?
I can go first, since I was just speaking. Um, I think for me, it's the data that John said. We've seen, um, we've seen positive, uh, we haven't seen positive transmission in the school. We've seen the positive success of the school, and it's the enrollment. I, if we were to go at the beginning of this year and take all of our students in the building, and that's what we were doing, is making sure that we could fit all of our students in. and that's what we were doing, is making sure that we could fit all of our students in, there's no way we could do this right now. Even if we added every single remote student into our building, we wouldn't be able, if every remote student decided to come back, we would not be able to accommodate that. So I think it's knowing what we have for our enrollment right now, and basing on that, and seeing the data and where we've come from.
I could piggyback on that. I feel the same way as Mandy. Part of it's enrollment. Part of it is where we were in the fall, as opposed to where we are right now, just as John said at the very beginning. At the very beginning of the school year, I remember students, our parents and staff being really anxious about having ten students in the classroom. Now, it's a little bit different. We know about transmission, we know about things like viral load, which never entered into my mind until this past fall. But we can make it work. And as I said, it is a little bit different. We have, we have desks that are much farther up toward the front of the classrooms, or the smart boards are. We took even more furniture out of the classrooms. And really, those are the factors that kind of turned it around for us. But mainly, I think it's because of the enrollment and then the science that we know right now about the transmission.
I think at Glover, we're right at the top with twenty students basically in every classroom. So we couldn't take anymore. And at the beginning of the year, we had more students. So, we couldn't possibly do without bringing in new teachers and setting up other classrooms to be able to accommodate that number. And then it's everyone's alluded to, we were concerned, of course, with the large class size, six-foot spacing. How would we teach? But as we have known now, we're right there. Our performance is going quite well, and we're where we're supposed to be academically. So, we think it's time to be able to experiment and bring in more kids and do the six-foot spacing with whole class. Again, at Glover, we can't take anyone coming back in from remote, because that would warrant another classroom somewhere.
So, I guess it's my turn to chime in. For me, Sarah, I feel like I knew at Evolith School, it was one of the few schools where we could probably have squeezed the kids in, because the classrooms are fairly large, and there is a couple extra rooms there. But I just feel we were in such an unknown territory, even summer. The first thing that happened was, you know, we all came back, we had been out of the buildings totally. And then there was anxiety when we had the teachers come back in. I mean, every little step of this was like, there was, I don't want to say fear, but we were very cautious. And I think with educators, we always focus on the safety. It's always one, we can't teach the kids if we can't maintain and keep a safe learning environment. So with COVID and the unknowns of COVID, and the risks of children and parents getting sick, I think we took a really cautious approach, and I think it was what we needed to do at the time, because there were so many unknown factors. We didn't know how fast things were gonna happen as far as the things spreading in our classrooms. But I would also say, you know, we started out in that cohort model. We did start out with bringing the younger kids in right from the beginning. And even the cohorts, you know, that was one of those mitigation things in my mind, to make sure we had control factors before we put everybody in. I think if we put everybody in, we may have not have been as as successful as we have been with what we've done. You know, there's certainly been a lot of changes, but there's been some positive things, like working with the kids in smaller groups, and having an opportunity for ten or twelve kids in the classroom with a teacher. You know, the teachers were surprised, I will tell you, you know, when I've gone through the building and checked in with the staff, how are kids doing? How do you, how do you guys think things are going? You know, when you think of a child last year in October, how do they appear to you? Are they coming along in all the ten ways we would expect a little kindergartner to be coming along? And I, you know, it was a little bit surprising, but it was like, yeah, they were really happy. By the end of October, they were telling me that they, they really felt with the smaller class sizes, some of the things that we had done, that the kids were making great progress even that early. So I would say, yeah, maybe, you know, you could have done it in one school, one building, but then you couldn't have done it, because what would little Glover do if you threw the, everybody in Evolith and didn't offer that same opportunity in your Glover building? So, I just think we have to understand, we came from a spot of so many unknowns, and now we're shifting to knowing more, and we have to just keep going. Things are in constant motion this year. It's probably been one of the hardest things for every single educator. And, you know, we just have to adapt and be ready and move on to the next challenge.
Thank you very much for all that information. The other piece of this is, so, and Brian spoke to it, when we had our meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, one of the things I brought up was the importance of, now that we've really changed our, our method of teaching right now, I mean, this is a drastic change. And it's a change that, you know, our students needed, and I, I fully support. I have issues about it only happening for half the kids, but that will be, I'll discuss it at a later point. But, you know, as we all make this drastic change, it was a concern for me that we allow children and families to make changes to their decision. And what I'm hearing here is this, the, the success of this, this being able to happen, is really dependent on not allowing anybody that is in remote or to come in. But we also have the other factor of people that are homeschool could re-enroll. And I don't think legally, we can tell them they can't. People that might have been private may come back. I think that was less likely. But the idea that there's gonna be no changes, I want to make sure we're not putting something out here that is so, that we're walking such a tight line, that if we, if we keep our word and let people change, like we said two weeks ago we would, that it will negate the, the capability of running this program. I want to make sure we're setting this up for success, and we can get people back, and we're not pulling the rug out in, you know, three or four weeks, if all of a sudden we have an influx of people wanting to do this. So what is our path forward to allowing that movement between the cohorts? And what is our plan if we recoup some of these homeschool families or people who have left for other reasons?
Sarah, can I answer some of that? We have already looked at that, like Evolith has room to take kindergarten kids in, if they want to come back from remote. Coffin has space in grades one and two, I believe, right, Sean, that we can move kids back in, in third grade at Village also. So, yes, they may not be able to come back to Glover, but there are rooms in other schools in the district that they can return to, so they can go back to live learning.
Okay, so any, any family and any student that wants to go back to live learning will be granted that. No one will be turned away because of lack of spacing.
Well, I think Dr. Bucky could probably ask that better, because if we run out of space, we're gonna have to hire another teacher and set up a room, but that will be done. John, did you wanna?
Yeah, and I think that people have already noticed that there are postings and anticipated vacancies, that if we make this model change, and we need to run an additional section of kindergarten, or first grade, or second grade, we want to be able to do that. As I say, we're, we have the capacity to do almost anything. We might need a little time in order to make it happen. And so if we launch this K to three on Monday, I would love to be able to make all the changes at once, but it's just not feasible if there are fifteen families that move one way or another. And that might be a good indication of why we wait, put out a survey to families, say, what is your anticipated change? I have the remote cohort numbers, the fully remote students, and our capacity to take people that may have been in remote, that went to hybrid, that are looking at this to say, oof, not, not really wanting my child to be in a room with twenty people. I think we really get into a dilemma when we start looking at everything as a binary choice in COVID. It's either this, or it's that. And as I've said from the beginning, it's not. Sarah and I met with the teacher today, who said, I haven't had a desk in my classroom in years. And so it's not that all teachers will not have a desk now, but some classrooms where to maximize the number of students in that room, it might be the teacher desk that moves. And so, will all children be on technology at the same time? No, we have technology infrastructure problems, but that doesn't mean that we won't use technology, because not all children can be on it at the same time. And so I just want to caution us from these binary choices of it has to be a hundred percent one way or the other, and look for that fertile middle ground where there's compromise.
And it doesn't mean whiteboards won't get used ever again.
Correct.
I mean, depends on what's happening in the classrooms. You know, breakout, you know, groups for reading, and then maybe the whiteboard is being used. However that approaches, it's just, it's change.
Correct.
I think that's the key point, in that we all have to be flexible here. And I think our teachers and our, and our principals have shown that they've done an amazing job being flexible throughout the whole year, and you know, I, I think, and our students as well, and we're just gonna have to continue to be flexible to make this work.
Yeah, I, I, I just, my, my comment, just and other people can, it's not a question, but, you know, starting, you know, right, right with Donna, you know, Sean, Brian, and Mandy, we've heard nothing but positivity. And they're talking about how the reaction of the teachers has been to these changes. And most importantly, I think it was, you know, they were talking about it being the first day of school. It will be, it's going to be exciting. It's gonna be exciting for these kids to be back with, you know, eighteen, nineteen kids in their classroom, instead of maybe nine or ten, that they might have known last year, and now they've been in a different cohort. So, I think that's really exciting. And I'm, I'm really excited about the positivity that I've heard from, from all of yours, all of the staff, John. I mean, we've seen this before during other times prior to COVID, but I just want to thank them for, you know, being creative, being flexible, and looking at this, because I agree, I, I think one of the biggest things that's changed from August is we just have to remember, there was so much, that was that period of time where COVID just sort of started coming back. And there was so much going on out there. It, it impacted me personally. I know at my place of work, the, the concerns went full circle from where they were in June. And now, where we are today, it, it's the same thing that we're hearing with elementary education and with the education in Marblehead. We just know more about it. We know more about the cleaning. We know more about, as you said, what, what can be done in classrooms and how we can handle these things. So, it's just, I think this has just been a great meeting so far, and I'm excited to have the conversation continue.
Sarah, did you have any more questions?
Yes. So, this one's for Brian. You have a few programs that are housed in your, and Mandy also, because they age up. Programs in your building that are, are wonderful models of inclusion. The Access Program, the Tides Program, that, that, although I don't understand all the pieces, my daughter, I had a child in one of the classes where some of her peers were part of the program, and I often saw, you know, they would come in with a service provider, or an aide, or multiple. So those are bodies in the room too. I want to make sure that for our special ed students, that they're able to have all those additional people that they need with them to service their needs, and that, you know, obviously, we're meeting everyone's IEPs, and we always, and we will, because we're required to, but that we're, we're able to still keep with the ratios and the spacing in those buildings. And, you know, keep up with the beautiful inclusion, inclusive, you know, model that, that is those programs.
We're, we're still planning on doing the inclusion. In fact, I had met with Jess Levinson, who's the BCBA Coordinator for Access. And she and I started the conversation today. She carried it over with Eric, and that's the plans that they're working on now. How do we continue? We don't want to lose that inclusion, because that's very important for children with these type of disabilities to be able to get into the classrooms. So yes, we are going to do it. We may have to do some experimenting to figure out how to do it correctly, but that isn't our plans. Oh, Eric, there you are. Do you want to speak about this?
I'd love to. Good evening. Yeah, so thank you, Sarah. I think it's a great question. It's, I think, one of the few, fortunately, that, that we are still, you know, grappling with every single detail. I think the good news is that those numbers of students that, that do require, require additional staff, like in the grand scheme, is a very small amount. So that's a good thing. The second thing, I think the big word, the key word that you used, is really analyzing, examining staff that are needed. And I think that we, which I love, always go above and beyond in terms of having, you know, staff in these classrooms. And I think it's, it's an opportunity certainly to, you know, ensure, to your point, that we, you know, based on our required, a requirement to ensure the appropriate staffing, that we're really strategic about which staff are in these classrooms. And I think a lot of times, we get unintentionally, in our own way, in terms of thinking about specific staff that are from specific programs that go into these classes, and we may have at times two different staff members from two different programs going into one classroom, and we don't necessarily always need that. So I think, and, and actually, I know, and to Brian's point, Jess and our team chairs, I know we're talking K to six right now, but really K to twelve are already on that. You know, we're already thinking forwardly about what that's gonna look like. And, you know, in the spirit of what we've continued to do across the board, we'll collaborate with parents and communicate that out. So it's a good question. I don't have a set, set answer for you, but I don't foresee that being a large challenge at all.
No, that was a great answer. I just wanted to make sure that we were maintaining inclusion for all those students. Another group that I want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about, in my sense is that there won't be, it won't be too impacted, but how does this affect the Metco students, and is there any concerns there? Because I want to, I just want to make sure that all of our students are, you know, getting a positive benefit from this.
Yep. I think that I'll pick up that, and I'll ask Nan to fill in any blanks. I think we'd be remiss not to talk about the fact that the second day of planning for this, we invited all of the team chairs across the district to participate in the planning, to address those questions about services and inclusion, so that they were part of the conversation as we built this. One of the things we did was to develop a document of questions and make sure that everything was being considered. And so I know Nan has been working with Heidi Harris, who I also see on the screen, to make sure that this is a seamless, hi Heidi waving, a seamless transition for our Metco students. So either Nan or Heidi, if you want to jump in and take this?
Sure, I'll do that. Heidi and I have been on the phone a couple of times, talking about this together. He's been quiet all, all night, and now, now he's gonna bark. So we have, we've made the exciting decision to bring our Metco students back for a full day. So if, for example, if they come, come in for the morning, they will have their four hours of in-person instruction, and then have lunch, and have some supervised support to do some work, and then join and log back on for the remote section of their day, which is one thirty to two thirty in the afternoon, and then the bus will transport them back home. So, they're actually going to be offered more time and more support in the district. And Heidi and I both have a meeting planned, a parent forum, pending the result of, of this evening. We have a forum planned with parents tomorrow night to bring them up to speed, and to share the changes, and to answer any pending questions they may have.
Thank you very much. And I'd love to hear the, the results of any of that too, Nan, as, after you have that parent meeting, if there's any specific concerns. Now, you, you note in your presentation, John, that you had the meeting with the staff yesterday, and that the, you had, you addressed the teachers' questions and concerns. Can you just walk us through what those main questions and concerns were, just so that we have an idea? You know, and, and we can be cognizant of our students and our staff's needs? You know, and we can be cognizant of our students and our staff's needs?
I think you know the answer to that, Sarah, is that mine was an overview at the district level. And then they split into building level because the questions would be more granular at the classroom or program level. And so I gave an overview, much like I gave to school committee this evening, of what the proposal would be to school committee. And then allowed building principals to meet with their staff to ask questions. I know Mandy Murphy at Village put together a survey. Another school put together a Google document so people could start adding questions to that. They have faculty meetings tomorrow to address some of those questions. So I didn't specifically address concerns with the district overview.
But this is something then that I feel you have support for.
I do.
All right, David.
I just wanted to say for our K through six, sixth graders, this is a wonderful development. And I, I'm very eager to hear how we're going to provide this for all of our students.
David, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? All right. I want to thank everybody as well. I know that you guys have been hard at work. You know, I heard this, the kind of the update last Thursday morning at the reopening committee. And, you know, there's a lot that's going into that and that's gone into this and will continue to go into it. And so I think, you know, again, one of the things that I took away from sitting in at the MEA meeting this afternoon, at the meeting with John and MEA this afternoon was sort of a wish for more time. And I think I didn't want to sort of go to that point before I was in that meeting and then hearing from the teachers in there. It was really helpful to hear how that time would be utilized. And again, just kind of that reminder that, that we all really, we're all taking care of each other here. And that giving the teachers a little bit more time is going to help them care for the kids better, you know, in the short and long term. So I think that's just, you know, I'd like to impress that upon the committee because I know we've all, since the February 4th meeting, I think it was, been really gung ho on getting, getting kids back in the classrooms as quick as possible. And as John has mentioned a few times, you know, it may, and I think something from the fall was, you know, or maybe Dorothy Presser, the, this, you know, go slow to go fast or start slow to go fast. And that's kind of what's where my head is, is at at this point.
Maybe comment and question. I agree on that piece. I think I said it too, that I can see how that could be an overwhelming move for teachers, given the logistics and for principals, really for everyone involved, just given the logistics entailed. So I am, you know, I, I don't see any issue with giving them a little bit more time because we also want teachers to feel confident in what they're going to deliver. And that impacts the student's success too. So I think that makes sense. I guess my question is, right now, the plan is a phased approach. So K through three and then four through six. Does it need to be? Could all students go back on that? You know, if we gave perhaps another week, for example, or the term if we need to, but then could they all start on the same day?
I would think so, yes. And I think, I think it's important to note that you heard from four building principals this evening and not part of any of their presentation was there was resistance to this or teachers didn't support this or teachers were opposed to this. So I think principals have met with their staff. And of course there are going to be questions or concerns. But to suggest that our staff are not in unison of wanting to get students back into classrooms, which is what they have said since August. This is a big step. There will be questions, concerns, anxieties. But to insinuate that teachers do not support this or are opposed to this, I just want to be clear that in the meeting with MEA today, from their leadership, we did not hear that.
Correct. And I'm sorry if any of my words insinuated that because what I took away from there was that they would, they would, you know, they're going to do what they need to do as they've done all year. But that it would be greatly appreciated if there could be a little bit more time to really get their feet under them. Yeah, Emily?
Was there a date that was specified?
So I think that date is sort of the trimester break. That, that was the one that kept coming up. So it would be a return on the 15th. You know, I think there's conversation to be had around the eighth versus the 15th.
Okay, so if it was the 15th or the eighth, it would be all grades, K through six would start together?
I think so.
And then does that give enough time to send out a survey to find out who, if anyone wants to go between the two different models?
I think it would be tight, but we could do it. I think teachers would appreciate the logical break that we've talked about throughout the year. A lot of echo. Am I echoing for you?
Nope, you're good.
Throughout the year of those pivot points. So the trimesters for K to six or quarters for vets in the high school.
Is it, is there a, am I on? From a curriculum standpoint or from a student perspective, is there, like, is there something that changes at that date? Like, you know?
But that was one of the things that was mentioned in the meeting today was that, that there is sort of, as the teachers look towards the end of the trimester or quarter, but we're talking about K to six, so it's trimester, that there is sort of this natural kind of catching up that's done so that they sort of end at that nice neat break. So that in their minds, it was helpful. I also think it, you know, one of the reasons that I pushed to have this meeting on Tuesday night is because, instead of rolling this out on Thursday evening, is because parents have work to do too. You know, this, if we send our K to three back next week, the, the parent, working parents who have nannies need to readjust that, you know, I'll have to readjust mine. So I think there's something to be said. We, we got an email, I believe it was today. Maybe that didn't go to the full committee. Maybe that was just me and you that was on that. From a working parent and who lives in Marblehead and has kids in the system and sort of asking like, just, just slow this down a little bit, like give us all a little bit of time to get this into place. And, you know, and I'm sure we're going to hear from plenty of people saying, no, you know, do it on the first. So these are always with all of these decisions. These are the, the pieces that sort of have to get weighted out.
So the other piece of the trimester break is then we would, we would be able to not make it piecemeal with kids jumping. Like, it really would be at the first day of school. Like, we could figure out who's coming back from homeschool, who's transitioning from remote to full in person or vice versa. There may be people that want to come out the other way. And we really could start, you know, everyone. So it's not the teachers saying, and this is how we move and this is the new way. And then doing it again a week later with a new group of kids. We could accommodate everybody and start everybody fresh. Because that's the natural marker we've told people.
I've said to several people that a third of our constituents are going to think that this is too little, too late, and we should have done it sooner. A third will think too fast, reckless, too soon. And that area in the middle is where we want to find comfort in people feeling that it isn't too little or it isn't too much and doing this in a way that the rollout is successful.
My biggest concern is the people who want to switch between. I don't, because if it is going to cause like a Glover student who's coming would want to come back and they have to go to a new school. I mean, that's like a huge change for someone. And I think that information needs to be found out right away. Like basically send it out, find out who wants to do anything and then have that. And then we can kind of figure it out from there. I mean, obviously the date will be set, but we got, that's like, to me, some of the most important information that we need to find out. Because if, I don't know if it's going to be a lot of people, but if it is, that's a lot of logistics beyond just like the physical space that I think that will need to be figured out for everybody.
And John said, depending on that, we may need to hire someone.
Well, exactly. So that's going to take.
Hire someone by Monday.
Right. So that's my only, that's one of my big concerns.
But don't think Nan and I don't have tricks up our sleeves if we had to pivot into March 1st.
No, but I'm thinking to keep it smooth and make everyone feel comfortable in the, in this new change, because we want everyone to feel good about it. So how do we do that for everyone?
I do recall Mandy Murphy saying she really liked being in the classroom.
Shall we move to the?
Tomorrow's teach Wednesdays.
To Matt Fox and Dan Bauer for the high school middle.
Move on to seven to 12.
Sorry, just on that one, do we need to make an official decision or no?
I think that would be helpful if we want to do that for the K to six now, if you're prepared to make a motion.
I'd like, I'm just asking like, what, what do we want to do? Do we want to kind of close this conversation out and move on or, or do you want to hold it till the end? I don't care either.
I see them as too distinct. So if you made a K six determination now, we could move on to six, 12, or seven, 12.
So is anyone interested in making a motion to support the move? Support the plan to move K to six, A and B cohorts together for five half days a week, starting March 15th?
I'd like to hear the, the seven through 12 presentation because I, I view our student body as a collective student body. And I, I'm not comfortable with this piecemeal of breaking them up. But if it's the will of the committee, that's fine.
I don't care.
We can continue, move on. I don't have any take on that motion, so.
Well, I mean, I think it's just, I, I mean, Sarah, I think we're on the same page here. Having a second grader who stays in the classroom all day is very different than a junior who's at the high school changing classes all day long with different teachers, different cohorts.
I totally appreciate.
Working through the hallway, right?
I totally appreciate that. But two weeks ago, we, we were overcome with emotion from hearing about the, the mental health crisis of our adolescent teen population. And that, that is something that sat with me and has sat with me every day since then. So it, it's hard for me to imagine that one of these decisions does not somehow impact the other in some way, that there's not any type of ripple effect. I just, I, I, I'm very concerned with what we heard two weeks ago.
I agree. I agree. And I, I, you know, I look forward to hearing Dan Bauer speak and Matt Fox speak about how they're going to move their schools forward, just like we did with the elementary school principals. But I, I think they're, they're two distinctly different learning groups that, and we're fortunate that we have, you know, separate schools, you know, Vets is a standalone school and the high school is a standalone school. And, you know, there, there's different challenges with education. And I think we've heard at least from the segment of K through six, what, what they can do and what they're looking to do. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't aspire to do the same thing in seven through 12 and that we won't hear some of the same things from Dan and Matt. So I don't, I don't think necessarily that voting now on K to six closes the door on anything for seven to 12.
I agree. And I think you, I think anybody who's caught up on Commissioner Riley's decisions and statements today knows that K to six is a different animal than seven to 12, unfortunately. As much as we want to not have it be the case, it just is.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we want a motion? Do you want a motion, David?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think we could and close the chapter and move on to seven through 12.
So I asked for a motion to support the plans to move K to six in person, five days a week, half days, starting March 15th.
K through six.
K through six.
I'll second that. Is that what I, yeah.
Just to make the motion.
So moved. Oh, sorry. I will second. I will second.
All right. Any additional comments on that? I think that this is the right thing to do.
So my thoughts are, and I'm, I can, we can talk about this, but if, if, if we had initially thought about K to three next week and then four to six the following week, if, if we want, wanted to give everybody an additional week. I know you said everybody could, Megan asked the question, could everybody, you know, come together on that, on that date? So, so now K to six. Once again, granted, they're, they're different schools and things. Everybody would, would come together on that one date. But, you know, I'm just wondering if we gave K to three all of next week.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Because, because, because there wasn't going to be that week. We, we were talking about K one and, and I am very interested in hearing from, from the public comment because each of you here are, are parents of, and Sarah, are parents of, of K to six students. And I, and I think, I think that is another piece of it, that the parents need to make an adjustment. You know, whatever they're doing in, at, at home with their families and their kids and their children and their daycare and, and everything, you know, it's, everybody's eager and excited to go back. But I think there needs to be some planning there and, and discussion and what that's going to mean. So maybe the first wasn't the best, but.
I, I feel like dates is getting into the weeds. I think that John needs to make a recommendation for a date as, as the, you know, the operations manager, if you will. That's an operational decision, I would say. And that's his purview. So I think he needs to make a recommendation for a date and then we need to either approve it or not. It is my, I, I just think that we're starting to, to try to micromanage out of our purview if we start talking dates.
Am I right in understanding that the recommendation is the 15th?
It is.
Okay.
Okay. So, so the, so it's the recommendation is the 15th for K to six. Okay. Yep. I, I had misunderstood. I thought it was still going to be staggered and then it would fall to the 22nd.
No.
Okay. So, so the 15th. Okay.
Yeah, I, obviously with my parent hat on, I would love to get my children into school as soon as possible. And I know that they would love that too. I know they're very, very eager and anxious, like David said. But we have to do this in a logical and realistic fashion too. There's a lot of moving parts on, on all sides. So I think to allow the teachers the time that they need to make those adjustments, to get our children comfortable with it, the families, you know, then yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just happy it's going to happen.
Yes, agreed. I very much wanted to go home and, or well, wake up tomorrow and be able to tell my third grader that he's going back on Monday because he asked me about it today. But I think the 15th will, will suffice.
Thank you.
All right. So we've got a motion and it's been seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Abstaining, and I want it noted for the record, it's because we didn't have the full, I, I can't, I, I don't feel comfortable voting without knowing how this affects our entire student body. I support the return to school. I reach, support bringing our students back, but I want to know how this affects our entire student body. And it feels weird that four of us kind of put our own kids back in school and we haven't heard how it affects the other kids. And I know that's not.
Well, I have an eighth grader, so I.
No, that's completely unfair to, to suggest that anyone on this committee does not support getting our kids, all kids back in school is really not, it's not, no, it's out of order. It's out of.
I, I was saying that if you'd let me finish, I know that's not how anyone here is voting. However, the optics on this are not fabulous. I know you're all voting, you know, not like that. But I'm saying, you know, we all just went around about how excited our kids are. I want to know how this affects all of our students before I vote on it. And for that reason, I'm abstaining.
So I have an eighth grader and I'm incredibly concerned about him, far more concerned about him than my third grader. So just, you know, that can be in the record as well, that, that, and, and the, and the seven to 12 is where is my specialty in my profession. So I'm incredibly concerned about this entire group. And just because we can, we, we can do one thing for one group and it's going to be a different situation for another group, it doesn't mean that we should leave any other group out. So. yeah.
I support it in the back. I just wanted the full, I felt I needed the full presentation as I noted prior before I was prepared to vote. And that's why I'm abstaining because I didn't get the full presentation.
All right. I believe that it's Matt Fox's turn.
Mr. Fox. As John led off tonight with, um, and what you've talked about, K six is, is a little different than seven, 12. Uh, our schedule's a little more complicated. Our classes are much larger, um, and it's more difficult to balance them per se. Size of the classrooms, uh, the work that Dan and I, along with Michelle Carlson, Zee Page and Julie Ferrer did this summer. We, we can't, we can't return everybody at six foot base spacing. It's just, this is not possible. Uh, it would have to be three foot spacing. It, it's, it's just not possible to have a six foot total return to school like the elementary. And I, I hate to start with a downer statement, but I think we have to be realistic because we had to move from there because, uh, the goal, the charge from, uh, Dr. Bucky was how do we prioritize time in school for students? Still manage, uh, the spacing, still manage requirements of the state, which is, you know, the, the hours by, you know, the district average. By, you know, live, live experiences every day for students. So we had a lot of parameters. Trying to, to the most, to the best of our ability, keeping seven through 12 together because, you know, if, if we're going to step aside from us, really a pre K, a K 12 model, we, we want to run the district as much as we can under, you know, Dr. Buck's surveillance there of a, of a seven, 12 approach. So looking at a, a bell schedule cohort rotation that, that matches up. So that led us to take a look at a couple of different options. The first option, of course, would be to stay with our current hybrid and, and we know there, there are, you know, challenges with that. There are benefits to that too. Uh, option B though is what we are bringing to the table now. Uh, we went back to early July, uh, pulled out one of our old models and modified it, um, and spent a good time on that. So what we're proposing as option B would be two cohorts in a day. So that means every student Monday, four days a week, um, would attend a portion of the day to school. So two cohorts in a day. So it would look like Monday morning, A would be cohort A would be in the morning, Monday afternoon cohort B would come in. Tuesday, the opposite, B in the morning, A in the afternoon. Wednesday would stay remote because we have some shared staff that we have to, you know, to keep that too. And it brings everybody together. Thursday, we go back to A in the morning, B in the afternoon and B in the morning and A in the afternoon on Friday. These are about three hour chunks and, and eight to 11 and 11:30 to 11:35 to 2:30. These are you know, divided up by the classes. So for us, that would mean four classes in the morning, three classes in the afternoon, and then a, a big bonus, you know, what we heard about is an in-person advisory, uh, at the school now for us. So that's sort of like the, the general overview of, of the model that Dan and I are talking about. And what we'll do is I'm going to go into positives, some implications and unknown. And then Dan is going to go to the same thing for the high school. So some of the positive for vets from option B. We get more in-person time. Uh, we go from 16 hours over two weeks of in-person time to 23. So we jump up in the number of hours students are in front of teachers and with their classmates. We increase, uh, students being in the building from two days a week to four days a week. They're in the building four days a week. With that time and with that in-person time, uh, we get more social emotional supports and connections, um, with, you know, teachers or students looking at with the teachers and peer-to-peer connections, uh, if you see your peers more often. We still at the middle school somehow miraculously meet the 34 hour requirement, 35 hour requirement. I, I don't know how, but the math worked out. So that was sort of the last thing that we went through. Our classes at the middle school will go from 33 minutes to 42 to 46 minutes each. So we actually get longer classes. Believe it or not, um, our in-person, our advisories will become in-person now. So instead of virtual advisories where, to be honest, we, we struggle with attendance with our, with our advisories right now. We'll be able to do more in-person activities with our students then. It reduces, um, for the hybrid students, remote classes will not only be on Wednesdays. So instead of juggling through remote meetings in the afternoon and things like that, they're all in person except Wednesdays. And our homework club now would be in person. We would run a couple of homework clubs on Mondays and Tuesdays when students, whoever's in the afternoon could stay after, meet with teachers, get assistance and things like that. So those are also the positives that we pulled out here, vets for the, for option B. Some of the implications if we make this change, um, I think the, the biggest one that's to sort of get over is, um, it's an impact on the families, uh, a different arrival and departure times. Um, and it's, it's a change, you know, three, essentially three quarters of the way through the year. The challenge, the change, you know, i- if a student's getting picked up, they're getting picked up around, you know, noon and, and dismissal would still be sort of around noon or their arrival would be around noon if they're in the afternoon cohort. It would be the afternoon cohort at 2:30, uh, would sort of be the change. But we're also moving to whether that, you know, students can walk home, you know, or, or, or heading into the spring. Heck, because I think it's going to be 50 on Friday. So the, that's, that's a big one that, that I think we'd hear from our parents from about that. So obviously drop off pickup plans need to change. If a student's watching younger, younger, younger siblings in the afternoon and they're, they, they have to rotate through the afternoon cohort, that's going to be a challenge. Um, it's already been addressed. There's, we're going to have to make some changes with the Metco program and, and support our students that way. And then to support those in-person advisories, um, we would have to have some students change their advisories at this point. Uh, all remote students, all students who are elected remote, uh, would have to change their advisory because they couldn't be in the in-person advisory. So we'd have to create some remote advisories. And then some students, because of those changes that are hybrid, would also have to change their advisory too, just because of, uh, gaps left behind. And then the final thing, the unknown is again, what was addressed and what's already been brought up before. Will this change, you know, necessitate for families to move, um, or drive families to move from one model to the next? Um, and that's when we get, we get very tight. You know, it's, it's unfortunately at the middle school and the high school, it's not as easy as starting up a new classroom. You know, if, if we have a good number of students return or a good number of students go out, it's, it's a, it's an entire reschedule for a team or grade or possibly the building, uh, which, which is, um, the challenger in the middle of the year. So those are the positives, implications and unknowns, sort of where we're sitting for vets for option B. Dan, I'll turn over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. You know, first of all, before I get into our plan, I just want to echo what, what the other principals have said. I'm extremely proud of our staff. Um, and you can't lose sight of the work that has been done throughout this year. It's been, it's been a year of adjusting. It really has. I believe we've been through five schedule changes throughout the course of the year, right? And certainly that impacts our students as well and our students are resilient. I'm proud of them too. But our teachers really have worked hard and they're resilient. Um, and you know, when Dr. Bucky charged us last week with working on, how can we bring students back, as, as Matt said, uh, we, we are in the same boat in terms of six foot spacing. Everything is based on that. We spent a lot of time this summer, uh, as, as Matt's crew did, measuring and plotting and planning each classroom, each section. And as you remember, we had to rebuild our whole schedule to be in a cohort model, right? We went from a three foot to six foot. And it's amazing the work that, um, Michelle Carlson and Christine Chakowsky did to turn that schedule around. So we've done that piece. So when we look at it, we're like, how can we do this? Will a schedule change allow an afternoon and a morning to bring more students back? Absolutely. Just as Matt said, you know, with an afternoon, morning break, our students will be back four days versus the two days. And, and utilizing a current grid, if I could visualize that, what we've been using all year where we've been planning by the week, I think is advantageous for us because that allows for some continuity as you bring another schedule change, although it's morning and afternoon, it's still, you know, we still have the, the cohort A coming in the morning on Mondays, which they've done all year and B coming in the morning on Tuesdays. So that continuity is there. The remote Wednesday is there as well. So we've established those pieces. You know, certainly having the students in the building more, I, I think certainly would be, um, you know, and again, I haven't received a lot of student feedback. We just haven't had the opportunity to ask on that part. But I, I know our teachers are working hard and they'll make the adjustments to make it work as they, as they always do. The, the other piece too is we talk about screen time, right? And our current schedule, two thirds of the classes are virtual, they're remote. So a change to this would then reduce it to really one third of our schedule would be remote and that's Wednesday. So the student, that we would reduce screen time, which I think we all want for our students. And also the preparation that goes into preparing remote classes is maybe three times as much time required as in person. It really is. It's a lot of work. Um, and we talked about how our teachers really have planned three modes this year, in-person, remote and asynchronous. So that, that piece in itself, I think would be beneficial and thinking of our staff as well, but also for our students having some continuity there, I believe would be really important. Certainly the in-person hours would be increased and you have that balance piece. And I know our teachers have done a great job in terms of adjusting with assessments as best they can, but it's still a challenge. And now having them in twice in the week, they're able to balance that because we know the time with them is very precious. We do know that and we, and we do appreciate that part. I, I also think that, um, when you look at the implications, you know, obviously in this COVID environment, every typically in a normal year, every move has a domino effect, right? One move is going to, there's a counter move to everything. And you have to balance that out. In the COVID, what we've found is every move is not dominos, it's avalanches. So every move, there's, there's all sorts of movement around it. So you have to be careful. And I do appreciate the piece that was said about time. You know, our staff can do anything, but time is critical for them to make that juncture. As simple as it might seem in a change with morning and afternoon, there's a whole lot of work that's required for curriculum and, and shifting to that. So time is, is, is really advantageous. So I would say the implication for us at this point is I'm not as good at math as Matt, as I shouldn't admit that publicly. But there would be a, a decrease in, in the overall learning time because something has to give. The typical time we have with them is four hours, right? In the, in the current hybrid model. If you shift to AMPM, it's, it's got to be reduced to three. You have to do it in order to fit both in. But is the way off having students in person more, more important than having, you know, two thirds of our current schedule remote? That's, that's a piece that's important. The other part too is there's some things that we'll work through. It's just transitional. Right now, you know, the students are dismissed, we jump in the remote, we, we move on. If we have an AMPM would require, as, as Matt was saying, the shift in the drop offs and pick offs. Now our, our juniors and seniors, they, you know, their, their transportation is usually different than our freshmen and sophomores in terms of coordinating that. Um, and also to note, our senior project begins mid-April. So that's going to change. We'll have seniors involved in that too. But I think that's something to keep in mind with our transitional point between cohorts. You know, it's going to be a quick turnaround. We'll do it. We'll get it done. And our students have done an outstanding job waiting in the morning. You've seen them line up and they come in. We just would repeat that in the, uh, early afternoon. Also our Metco students and some special education situations that require transportation that will be worked out and that has to be the forefront of our thinking and planning. So all students are included and that's critical. And obviously the unknowns are this, and I think it's been said, you know, with the, the K through six presentation. You know, we've been in a pretty good mode. Once we've established the natural break at the quarter, it is a nat for all, for, for all educators and administrators. It's a natural break and our families are used to getting the form about, you know, potential change of learning mode, you know, a couple of weeks out before the quarter break so they can look at it. Our guidance department does a lot of work trying to break down the classes and now working with families to let them know, hey, this is what your schedule will look like. So that time is, is critical too, because the unknown is, you know, whether there be a change by moving to an AMPM, will families go out or come in and the situation's changed, the unknown, time is closer to that transition would be extremely helpful. The other piece too, and again, just, just throwing out, I want to be transparent, the, our guidance department is prepared. Their course selection process based off the current hybrid schedule that has all the different openings so that they can meet with students individually throughout the month, up until April 1st or override, the whole process is built on that. So any shift would require us making an adjustment on, on that piece. So again, closer we can get to a quarter break, I think would be advantageous for that piece. Uh, and then finally, the last component, just to be transparent as well. If the remote is reduced down to one third, we're able to survive right now with quarantine situations based upon two thirds of our current programming being remote. But as we move closer to April and move out of there, it may be less of a factor. So I think I've been more than long-winded, but again, I just want to state again how proud I am of our staff and of our students for being resilient, making the changes and doing what's best for students. They want to, our staff wants to produce an outstanding product for our students. And they want what's best for our students too. They, they really do. So thank you.
Thank you both. Um, can you just, uh, remind me when the quarter break is?
Third quarter ends April 1st and the fourth quarter begins Monday, April 4th.
All right. Any questions? So.
If no one else has any idea.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, is, is breaking, breaking into this A and thank you very much. Those were very thorough, um, presentations. If, if we break into the, this AMPM situation, does that violate any contractual hours? I know that, you know, we have a very specific number and I think a lot of the parents might, might think, or a lot of the community might think, well, my kids are there from this hour to this hour, but that's not what our contractual hours are. So I just want to make sure that, um, the math and that works.
No, if you, if you envision, if you knew our schedule before, um, you know, teachers taught, you know, the whole day long from eight to 2:30. This doesn't change it for them. It's, it's an eight to 2:30 day for them and they're teaching their five contractual classes in that day.
But aren't they teaching them twice now?
Teaching contractual classes in the morning and they're doing a little bit more in the afternoon for us. Yes.
Okay. Um, I just want to make sure that, that doesn't require any new, any negotiations.
This, this, this model, if I, if I try to stay for the teacher viewpoint or from the student viewpoint when we're, we're going through this, because honestly, that's where we make our decisions.
Yeah.
To speak as a teacher. This is going to allow teachers to sort of slow down their, their approach, um, and really focus on in-person instruction. Um, and it's, it's been a hustle this year. Um, and that's, that's a, that's an understatement. Um, it's been a hustle and my teachers, that's I'll speak to vets only. I, I can't believe the work they've done this year. And, um, so I, I think from a teacher viewpoint, um, this is, this is a nice approach. It allows them to connect with their students in person more.
Oh, good. And I can attest, I've heard, um, one of your teachers, Toni Callahan speak very eloquently and passionately about how much she wants to do for her students and how hard this is emotionally on her as a teacher, you know, so I, I can, I can say I've seen it with my own eyes, how deeply that the teachers in your building care about their students. How are we decreasing the hours per day, Matt, but increasing the length of our periods?
Because the way it works right now is, you know, we're at eight to 12 and we're, we're fitting in seven classes in that eight to 12 spot. Uh, now we're going to an eight to 11 and fitting in four. And so it, it's, we're dividing the day, our seven periods in half. One group takes four in the morning, one, two group takes three advisory in the afternoon and the next day they switch.
Okay. All right. That makes a lot of sense. Um, and, and you said that both cohorts would be given the homework club, right? Not just the PM?
Right. It's the, on Monday, the, the header, the, you know, it's their in-person homework clubs. So Monday and Tuesday, whoever stays late Monday. So that would be magicians for us. That's B. They would have their homework club right down there and then headers next day could have their homework club on there in the afternoon. I have teachers running extra homework clubs. I have, you know, we, we are, we, we said, we had a great lead teacher meeting today where Toni was there actually. We started brainstorming and, and having a great time about what we can do with our students with advisory now when it's at the end of the day. They know all their homework that they're going to have going home. What can we do to help them out? You know, can we start, you know, doing some tutorials through those? And I, I mean, it was, we just went down the rabbit hole of some of the things that we could do with that advisory period. To make it a really rich and learning time to beyond just the social emotional stuff we always do.
Okay. And for both, um, Dan and Matt, so would asynchronous instruction go away?
Uh, I'll jump into that, Dan, since I've been rambling. Uh, we had, that's part of the discussion that, that we're going to have as a faculty and staff because that, we call it aha work at home asynchronous works. We call it aha work at our school. You know, some teachers have been using aha as, as really a way of flipping the classroom and moving it forward a little bit, you know, giving them a, a, a shorter amount of time. But at the same time, then they might be sort of pulling back on homework. So it's, it's been sort of a juggle. You know, I personally, and I want to talk this through with my faculty. You know, I would lean towards, because students are going to be in school every day, that we sort of slowly start reverting back to the, just standard approach of homework. And we even talked today about putting together videos for students about how to manage their time in this new schedule, sharing that with students and upcoming advisories, and then sharing that with parents at home. Like how, how are you going to juggle now? sharing that with students and upcoming advisories, and then sharing that with parents at home. Like, how, how are you gonna juggle now? When you have homework in the afternoon, you got a virtual class the next day, when should you get it done? And we literally walked them through about how they're gonna do some of this time management piece for the last quarter of the yearish, you know? So that's part of our approach that we're taking as far as time management.
Okay, um, and I, is that the same for you, Dan, I'm assuming?
Absolutely. Our, it's been a year of adjustment and certainly adjusting the asynchronous and certainly with the high schoolers. You know, um, being able to, to work through their schedule, there'll be an, an adjustment currently, you know, because now they're seeing them more in person, but there will definitely be a natural adjustment to that.
Okay, um, I, I just keep getting struck by the fact that we're the magicians and, and I really do feel like these teachers have like performed magic and flipping back and forth all year long. Um, can you logistically get all your students in and out? I think it might be actually easier in Matt's building because of the, the way I, at least when I drive by, I mean, it seems like there's just a flood of children on the street.
Would you like me to speak to that? So my post is out in front, so I've been timing. You know, as we, as we shifted, remember, we shifted to schedule number five. We reduced our passing time to five minutes because we were timing it and saw five work. So today it was like thirteen minutes that, once we dismissed, again, we're only at half the building, a little less because of a remote learning cohort, you take those students out. So the traffic really was pretty much empty in about thirteen, fourteen minutes over the last two days. So with that being said, um, you know, we've done a good job. Our students have done a remarkable job. We let them in at seven forty-five and certainly the colder weather, we have them wait in the field house where it's a little warmer. But they've done a good job now getting into the flow. Uh, really, it doesn't take long to get them into the building. So I think the important piece too is protecting the teacher and staff lunchtime, right? Because that would certainly be a, a component that, and that's incumbent on the administrative team. So we've been talking on strategies. We'll get the students out, they get out quickly. Um, and then we'll be able to wait till the next group comes in um, and then get them in. And the other piece too is remember, again, senior project comes into play. You know, April break, so some students will be off on internships and stuff, and that may reduce the amount of traffic in, in flow. But the students have really caught on to, you know, getting it, they know if they're here at seven forty-five, they'll get in the building by eight easy. So um, I, I, we, we can do it. Um, it'll require the admin team to really work on that.
Okay.
For us, it's, it's a similar sort of juggle, you know, we, we have two cohorts and for whatever reason, magicians are a little slower in their exit of the building and that's today. Uh, it's, each cohort has its own personality, but even today, there were seven minutes, you know, our campus was cleared in seven minutes. Um, it's, you know, it'll, it'll fall on me and Julia Ferrera to manage that second start of the day. Um, that's because teachers will be in their lunch. Um, but I, you know, I think it's doable. You know, I think even asking parents, if you're gonna, if you have to drop off and pick up, then maybe we drop off on campus and pick up on the street, you know, something as simple as that, where we're moving the traffic into two different areas. Um, especially in that middle of the day. So I mean, there's, there's ways to work it out. Um, that's, that's part of the nitty gritty and that's why some, some time between now and the start would be helpful.
Yeah, I actually, when I think about, not that a half an hour is, I mean, we did, went through all the traffic studies for the new school, but the fact that this will be a half an hour before the, the K through six might be better because then it's not the entire town out flipping at the same time, because we know that, that street can become congested.
More weather will have more bikes. So that'll be even better at our building. With, with better weather, we'll have more bikes, so.
Um, when, I mean, when realistically do you guys think this is gonna take a fair amount of planning? Um, when realistically do you think you would be able to implement this?
You know, Dan and I have talked, so you wanna talk?
I mean, certainly, you know, like I said, our staff, uh, they do amazing things in making the transition and as long as they have the time to work out what they need curriculum wise and, and practices. And then on us, on making sure, we have, I believe we have the guidelines down pat, the mitigations and everything have been very successful. The students have done a great job, teachers. So we have all that piece. It's just a matter of putting it together. Uh, and again, just that, that, that natural break piece, I think to me just makes sense in terms of how that goes. Uh, but I'm not making the decision on that, but um, I'll turn it over to Matt if he has any different thoughts on that.
Yeah, and, and I think, uh, you know, we, we, we took a look at a few dates, you know, we, we said, what can we get done here and there? And, and I think the only thing looming over our heads um, would be requests for changes. Um, and when, and when the change in instructional mode would happen for students, you know, depending upon what a family and um, cause like I said at the beginning, it's, it's a substantial change. If, if we have a, a big number of students leaving or, or returning. Um, you know, I have, you know, I have very few spots in our remote program. It was very tight this last quarter. Um, you know, we're, we're maxed in our remote program, just about, we're at twenty-five students and I can't just open a classroom. Um, you know, to open a whole other section of remote, if that's the case, would entail rescheduling an entire grade. Um, students would have to change teams, um, and not just the students that wanna go remote. So it's, it's impactful. Um, so I think, you know, Dan and I would, would probably really have to invest in a survey. Uh, I don't wanna say a binding survey, but some sort of guarantee that this is the plan moving forward, or what is the plan moving forward? And this is the drop dead date where you have to tell us. If you don't tell us, then you're staying for fourth quarter. And I hate to be black and white, but there comes a point where you have to make a decision with what you got. Um, you know, we, Dan and I could both turn this around, right? You know, pretty quick if, if there's no changes. I mean, we, we, there's gonna be some special ed considerations, what's taking place and so on and forth, but our, our, our days run with periods. So moving periods around is, is moving, you know, like blocks on a table. You just, you just readjust them. It's the changes of, of instructional modes that's, that'll be the, the huge unknown. That's, that scares me every quarter this year.
So would your preference be at the quarter change, which is what, the first week of April?
I, I would, you know, if you put me in a corner and said, well, if you gave me magic wand and said it's yours, I'd say yes. Um, you know, but like, like Dr. Bucky said, we can make whatever work, you know, we're just gonna have to invest time into making it work.
Okay.
Dan?
Um.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're, like Dr. Bucky said, do it right. Make sure we have everything vested through and although things seem simple, there's a lot of moving parts, the avalanche piece, just wanna make sure we do it right and do it well. We owe it to our students and to our staff.
Definitely, definitely. Now, how far off are we on, on meeting this six foot number at, in your two buildings? I know that, you know, we, we had thought we were there and then we remeasured and we reconfigured. And I know your buildings are a completely different situation with all the, the class changes and everything else. But do you have a sense, you know, that it would work in half of your sections or that it might work in, you know, twenty percent or only twenty percent it doesn't? Do you have a sense?
No, we, we, i- it's not a number that, it's not a number that's even functionable. Uh, I'll, I'll just tell you that. It, because I mean, I'm, you know, we were, we had two, we had two things that we did this summer that we, if you look at the reopening document that we sent to Desi, uh, somehow a picture of my, of my, my two sons uh, actually made it in when we measured, at least on page ten, uh, you'll see of my two sons as they came in nineteen, at that point nineteen sixteen, came in and for twelve hours, we went room to room with, with sticks and um, you know, measuring sticks and a six foot stick. And there's three foot pictures sitting there smiling for me and not smiling, made it in there. Um, beyond the measuring, Desi also had a tool, um, that was an online tool for you, you calculate square footage, the number of desks in there. Um, so, you know, I did, I did measurements, we walked through, we did classroom structures and then went through and just did square foot structures. Uh, to the point where I called down to Texas to talk to the, the economist, actually, he was an economist, believe it or not, who set up um, the, the programming for this tool. And uh, because there was some confusion about sizes of desks, because our desks are even bigger than the elementary. So I mean, we, we've, we've gone to the wall with this, literally. Um, and, and it's, it's just not feasible. I mean, I'm, I'm looking, I, I have my laptop here with the da- data up and it's, you know, with six foot spacing, I'm at sixteen. And, and there are very few classes that are sixteen and most, I mean, that's, that's a chunk of my classrooms. And that would be wall to wall.
Okay, no, I didn't, I didn't have a sense if it was, if we use the field house and or the auditorium or like if, if we were anywhere close to it, but you've answered that. I just, I was just more felt I needed to ask.
That's fine.
Yeah, we, we follow the same process. I couldn't get my children to come in, they're too old.
Come on, Dan.
But Lindsay.
Yeah, my son and your daughter are the exact same age.
Well, go, go with this, son, here, will you help me out? So.
I'll lend you kids next time.
Plotted, we plotted every room out, we followed, there was the, the, the Desi formula and we, you know, worked on the three foot, six foot spacing and then we broke down every single section that we have in terms of how that would break and it, it would not be feasible. So we, we broke it down thoroughly.
Okay, so we're, it's not a narrow margin. It's a gigantic margin that we're off by.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you very, very much. Um, and just while I have the opportunity, I've heard really good things about the program you've put together since our last meeting. Um, I know for sure Dan did one, I don't know if Matt did one, um, to kind of answer the concerns and meet with those students. So I just wanna acknowledge that and thank you for that.
All right, Megan, and I think you had some questions.
I, I don't know that I necessarily have questions. I have to be a hundred percent honest. Um, I wasn't so sure about the A M P M model coming into this. Um, but I think Dan and Matt, you guys have done a great presentation. Um, there's obviously a lot of work that you've put into this and so many details. So I think the avalanche analogy is, is a good one. Um, there are a number of things that I do like about this model, to be honest. Um, I think first and foremost, getting kids in, um, in person for days a week even, um, you know, giving them a reason to get up and get dressed and get out of the house and, and come in is important. Um, I think the homework piece of it, not necessarily the homework, but the time management skills, um, you know, is also an important thing to, you know, that I hadn't really considered. Um, so I, I think that's something, you know, especially that age group is something we need to, to start getting back in the, in the habit of. Um, I do wonder about the schedule though and about the feasibility for families specifically, um, you know, with that rotating schedule. But that's just my thoughts on it. I mean, to be a hundred percent honest, I would like to get some feedback from parents and, from families and students on what, what that would look like in terms of challenges for them, or, or maybe it's, you know, just a simple change and it's fine, but I, I would like some feedback on that. Um, so, you know, I guess this is just a lot to think about at this point. I think you've given us some really good information, a lot of food for thought. To be a hundred percent honest, I would like to really continue the conversation around getting them in the, the five days. And if that means reducing distancing, then, then I would like to have that conversation with, with the union. Um, I think it's important. I think we have to follow that through and if that isn't possible, then maybe this is the approach we need to take. Um, but, but that would be my preference at, at the time.
I can say that conversation is ongoing. Sarah and I met with MEA today and that, that is definitely on the table and that they knew what would be presented this evening, but that three foot distancing is still an integral part of the conversation because the high school, middle school piece is so complicated.
Okay.
So, but before I, I get to that, so, so Dan, you had, you had mentioned it, the, the rotation right now is, is A B, Monday, Tuesday. And then Thursday, Friday, it's A B. So they all have that. Um, they're used to coming in in the morning. The adjustment will be that on Tuesday, they go to the afternoon. And the B group on Monday would, would be in the afternoon on Monday. That, that's the new, that's the new norm. And to your point, you said they, they're already sort of used to, you know, one day they're in school, one day they're at school. So there is a little bit of a rotation going on. It seems like the adjustment, as Dan said, is the, is the afternoon piece.
And I think to be clear, the middle school, the, the advanced, those kids, you're in person, so you're in person on Monday and then you're asynchronous in the afternoon on Monday. And then you're asynchronous in the, in the morning on Tuesday, so for cohort A I'm talking. And then you're synchronous zooms in the afternoon on Tuesday. So really what you're doing is you're not, you're not, you're not flipping the way that they have to tune in a lot anyways. I'm right, my, Matt, right? I'm not, I'm getting this correct?
Yeah, e- essentially whenever they had afternoon virtual classes, they now have afternoon real-time classes. And, and not just afternoon real-time classes, our virtual classes are twenty minutes. We're now talking three classes of forty-six minutes each. We're talking real, real instruction, you know, real learning, a, a real experience and time with the classmates and an advisory in person.
I just wanna clarify, cause I'm confused by what David said. David, were you saying that you thought, you know, children may may switch between whether they go in person in the morning or the afternoon? Cause my assumption was if you were A, you're always in the morning. If you're B, you're always in the afternoon. No. Switches day to day where you are. Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're the, we're the sort of sticking point with that because we have seven periods, Dan has eight. You know, Dan, Dan has an easy switch between the two. So our afternoon is composed of three classes plus a shorter advisory. Um, so we're, we're juggling to fit seven periods into eight without creating a, a study hall or something like that for a twelve-year-old. Um, so if we were to keep the students the same, eh, eh, the awkwardness of, of, you know, running an A, B, C, D, and then G, H, I, and then G, H, I in the afternoon, it's, it, it would be fairly awkward for everybody to do that.
So, and I have to go with the A and B, cause I'm completely, I know that magicians is one of yours. I, I, I don't know.
That's fine, that's fine.
Um, so just so I get this right, if I had eh, eh, seven through twelve, they would go Monday morning, Tuesday afternoon, Thursday morning, Friday afternoon potentially.
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay.
And for us, that's, that's, that's how a header goes through the week anyway. They have Monday morning in personal class. So A has Monday morning in personal classes right now. Tuesday afternoon, virtual classes, Wednesday remote, Mon- Thursday morning, in-person classes, Friday afternoon, virtual classes.
So without the transportation need.
Right, right. And I get it. That's, that's why I said, that's the big, that's the big change is it's a, it's a familial change there.
Yeah, and I think that that's this piece where we're talking about the social emotional aspect of things and particularly for this age group of being able to be in person every day, um, and connected with their peers, um, in a more meaningful way. Um, you know, I think, I, I, I'm actually, I'm, I'm really glad to hear these updates because I think last Thursday at reopening, um, this plan wasn't quite where it's at today and I had, I had a lot of concerns over it. Um, even as the middle school parent who really wanted to see this, this push forward. Um, so I, I'm really happy with how this has sort of come together. Um, like Megan though, I think I, 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 I think it would be beneficial to have some more feedback from parents. Um, just because we are asking a, a, for this flip flop. Um, you know, my kid walks, so it's not that big of a deal, but I think Sarah may have mentioned, you know, that then your, your childcare may go away. And I was like, oh, shoot, my third grader's not gonna have a brother at home at those points. Um, so I think that there are these really big pieces for, for parents to work out. Um, and so I think having a little bit more info. I also think it would be, I mean, these are kids, we pulled them before on what they, what their thoughts are on their learning model. I think it would be interesting to, to get a little bit of feedback from them too, if possible. Um, you know, I think, again, referencing Commissioner Riley's statements today and where his head is, is at. This, this group is certainly the tough group. Um, and I think, you know, he noted that the high school nine through twelve is even tougher than the, the seven and eight. So I think this is a good next step. Um, I think this seems like a good next step. I think you guys are clearly asking for a bit of time, um, to sort of have all the ducks in a row. I guess I'm hesitant on, on the quarter break. It just seems like it's a ways off. Um, and I get, I get antsy around the conversations and the public comment that we had from a few weeks ago. Um, to, to punt this for, with this group for another month. Um, and I think it, it needs a little bit more info before we really move forward. So I think one of the things that kept coming in my head is that we have a meeting on Thursday. And because of February break, we have a meeting next Thursday as well. So we have quite a few lined up right in a row right now where we can really get some info hopefully and make some, make some choices. Um, I mean, I guess that's just where my head sits tonight. That it seems as though we're moving forward towards this, but you know, John has also noted, we're continuing talks with the MEA about the distancing. So if that can change, then we've got a lot more options than, than a afternoon, uh, a morning and afternoon um, flip flop. So I guess that's where I I guess that's where I sit with this. Emily.
So I just have a few questions, comments. Um, so the vets plan, I really like. I'm so glad that it's three hour chunks because at first I don't think it was in that. So the three hours with an actual 40 minute class is going to be so great, I think. Um, and then it follows the schedule they're in now. So it kind of just like we're saying, brings them in and they get to be with their teacher more. So but my concern is at the high school because I don't know exactly how it works, but I know that they're in, so cohort A is in person Monday, and then they have remote after school. Is that correct? In the afternoon?
So what we've done, I'm sorry, I'll wait.
No, 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 yeah, just you can answer that right now.
Right, so our our A is in the morning and then we join the cohorts in the afternoon for two remote classes, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday.
Right.
So those are 50 minute classes. So that's where the adjustment is made just i- in the the large puzzle.
Right.
That was a big change for us that allowed us to have more instructional time. If you remember back in maybe October when we put this together, was the afternoon remote.
Right.
Classes, um, because Tuesday B would be in and then in the afternoon they both join. So, um, Thursday, Friday, same thing.
Right. So now with this new plan, that afternoon remote chunk is gone.
Correct.
So they lose that, those two periods, I guess, right?
Correct.
So again, it's that balancing of do we want them in, but then they're going to miss out on some learning and is everybody okay with that? So, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yes. And and certainly when you do it that way, there's something has to give and do this because now you bring, you know, it's virtual is one thing, but now you bring them in. So you have the logistics of that to carve it out. Match the morning, but at the same time, you you see your teacher in person twice and once virtually. The way it's happening now is you see your teacher in person once and twice virtually.
Oh, okay. So in a way, it's it's actually better. Okay.
You weigh that in.
Exactly.
Person versus the virtual.
Yep.
Component.
Yeah. So I guess all that clarification is really good and to have, just let people know that because when you just look at it on the surface, it's like, oh, well, they're missing out on all this time. But then if you think about it, they're actually with their teacher more. So that's great. And then I also feel like waiting till April 5th is a long time. It's six weeks from yesterday. Um, I don't know what the right answer is, but to me, that oh, that's a big chunk of time and those kids need to be back more. So I think we need to talk about that. Um, but also I do agree with everyone. We need to find out what parents and students feel about this change. Um, I don't know. Because I was kind of against it, but now after hearing about it today with this presentation, I'm like, this sounds good, but I also I just would like to hear what everyone and even how teachers feel. I know at vets, they said that this would be great. Um, at the high school, do they feel similar? Do they like the idea of this switch?
We were working through everything and, you know, obviously we have some more time to work together. So we're just trying to.
Yeah. So but just over time, just like finding out how everybody feels about it. Um, and also like and like what Megan said, I, if we could do the three foot distance and kind of solve a lot of these issues, I'm a big proponent of that, but I know there's a lot that has to go into that. But so if we just can keep having that conversation and like John said, keep that going, that would be great. So thanks.
David, go ahead.
So I I think on the issue of the the three foot distancing, where where I come in on that is to some of the comments that we heard about where we were in August. And I and I wholeheartedly agree where we were as a country, as a community, as a school district and, you know, what was happening, um, with with COVID. And six feet was was one of those things that was was promoted at the time, given that what we knew. And I think that, um, over time, there there's been some changes that are leading us to allow for people to be closer than six feet. And I think, um, you know, for instance, the 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 most recent CDC guideline update that you can find, or there might be others, but on February 11th is that, you know, basically, we're at a point where we're promoting behaviors that reduce COVID. So that's very solid. People are accustomed to those, uh, behaviors. We're in a situation where we're maintaining healthy environments. We have been very fortunate to get federal funding and state funding upwards to 1.9 million dollars to be able to support the entire initiative since September that without those resources, you know, we wouldn't have had tools for teachers, um, personal protective equipment, um, air quality, um, units, additional custodians, cleaning high touch surfaces, all of those things that that those monies afforded us and they continue to afford us. Uh, we know that there's monies that still haven't been spent and we also know that there's another round of funding that's come forward to us. So I think that's that's just a huge difference from where we were in August and and I and I'm sure if you talk, I mean, we've heard it from Dr. Bucky and Michelle and others that that obviously that that infusion of funding has helped us come to a different place. So we're maintaining healthy operations as well. And then I think also, as we've heard from all of the teachers and administrators, that, um, we're very prepared for when someone gets sick. So we've seen those limited instances and it's really not that, um, it's being spread throughout the schools. But if there is an instance where an administrator or a staff member or an athlete gets sick, um, we have guidelines and procedures and policies in place that probably didn't exist in September until you get through, until you actually go through those situations, until they happen. And you have to, you have to walk through them. Uh, you know, I've done that at my at my day job and and experiences and, um, having having had COVID and gone through it was a whole nother experience. And I think even my experience from November, you know, now they're talking about 10 days instead of 14 days because they know more about COVID. They recommend that you don't need to have a negative test to go back to work. Um, whereas, you know, three, four, five months ago, depending on who you read. So things have evolved and changed. And I think the six to three feet, we most recently heard from the Marblehead Board of Health even that it wasn't necessarily the, um, policy of the Board of Health, but it but it was a recommendation that that they were that they were making. And I think Dr. Bucky, you even said when that meeting a couple of weeks ago where where the Board of Health said, you know, there there there, it doesn't mean we can't go to less than six feet, but it was certainly if we can. And so we're recognizing we can, we can do that in K to six. And we've heard from Matt and Dan that in most situations, we we can't do it in the high school. But I think if we are continuing to do, you know, those four bullets about, um, you know, what we know about COVID so far, I would like to think we could continue to look at that and have three feet distancing or distancing less than six feet because as we've heard, you know, there might be a couple of kids that are that are, you know, three feet apart from each other. But then there could be 16 kids that are six feet apart from each other or a rove. So I and I and I know Matt doesn't want to bring his kids back in and do the sticks and the measuring all over again. And we've been there and done that. So I I I understand that piece of it, but I think there is a change right now in in what six feet meant back in September and what it means now in order to, uh, safely provide education to our students. And I strongly encourage the superintendent and hopefully the M E A to have discussions about that and considerations and and not just overlook that.
I think that that's absolutely where the conversations are starting is that, you know, as has been mentioned multiple times tonight, we we are in a very different situation. Our data is is just it bounds, um, from where it was in, uh, in September and August. Um, you know, the things that we had concerns about, some, many of them thankfully didn't pan out. Um, and now, you know, our concerns have shifted into into other places where we actually have data supporting those concerns. So I think, you know, that it, yes, I think that that the the distancing piece and talking that through and 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 looking into the M O A and everything is paramount at this point. Yeah, Emily.
Want to say one thing, kind of going off what David said. There's so much talk about six and three and those are like the big numbers, but we don't know, is it really three? Because if it's four and a half, that's it. Even in your head, it's a different number. And I know Beverly is at four and a half and that's the number they picked. So I think finding what that minimum number is could make a difference. Maybe we don't even have to get to three. We just don't know. Um, maybe we do know, but that information we should find so that depending on how, like, maybe it makes people more comfortable if it's four and a half feet. That's the lowest bit and some are at six. So I think just getting more information on that would be helpful. Um, and not get so stuck on like six and three and try to find, you know, again, be creative on how we can do it.
Yeah, I think there's an inevitability that there will be classes at three feet distance and so it will have to be that distance in the M O A. Um, so because of that, you know, that is sort of that magic number.
Okay.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that every single class at the high school and at vets is going to be at three foot distance.
Right.
When they can, when they can be more distance, they absolutely would be.
Right. I guess knowing that what those numbers like.
Right.
That information would be great to know.
Keep getting more data. Absolutely. All right, there was one question that popped in my head and now it's gone. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Megan, then Sarah, I'll come to you.
Well, I was just going to ask just, um, you know, because we do have two more school committee meetings coming up. And if I'm putting you on the spot, that's fine. You can come back to me, but just the timeline for kind of getting to the next round of information. Like I don't, you know, we want to move this along quite as quickly as possible, knowing that there are a number of conversation and moving pieces. But if we can just have a general feel for what that timeline is going to look like, I would appreciate that.
I think that, uh, Matt and Dan would probably both agree and I open it up for them to correct me if I'm wrong, but there are so many moving parts in the high school and the middle school schedule. What they have presented you this evening is what will work for the A M or P M. I agree with the idea to reach out to students and parents for feedback on that. And the three foot distancing is going to be what has to be negotiated with M E A because in a section in the middle school, in a section at the high school, it might be three feet exactly. And then the next class that they go to could be five feet and the third class they go to is six. And so it would be in negotiating with M E A three to six.
Right, but it might change some people's idea. If you're a teacher who's nervous and you find out your class is really at five feet, you might feel differently about voting for one. So I I don't know. I don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna dish to Matt because I see his hand up and we had this conversation last week. So, Mr. Park.
There's no concept of five feet. It's either three or six because the reality is, I can't, I'm not setting up a room every period for the next class that's coming in. Desks either have to be at six foot or three foot because nearly every single room, every single room has a three foot classroom. So the the reality is, is there's always going to be kids within three feet of each other because even if a smaller class comes into a room set up for three feet and they don't need every three foot desk, there's going to be kids within three feet of each other because there's not enough desks to all be separate. There is no five foot. You know what I'm saying? Is that?
See, that's really good information to know because, right, so different classes go into different classrooms, like
Right.
every period. So that, okay.
You know, so Mr. Passacau, our social studies, seventh grade teacher on the red team, might have a class of 20.
Right.
Okay, but he's also got, I know he has a class of 25. And he might have a class of 19. That's the smallest maybe. So in 19, you might, you know, there might be a little, you know, but the reality is that we're not going to move the desks.
Well, right.
They're all going to be three foot and and I'd be able to skip one desk hither and yonder.
Right.
Everything, every desk is set for three feet.
Okay.
The it's it's a fallacy to say that, well, this room could be five feet. Beverly, four and a half feet. They're only doing that at the pre K one, pre K one or two level. My son goes to Beverly High School. He's three foot. They have, they have three cohorts there. He goes either once a week or twice a week, depending upon his week to school. So there, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, but that's good. And that's great information to know just when we're gathering information. So thank you.
So it seems as though, I think that I think that based on the M E A conversation, that there may be some additional information to share this Thursday. There may not be. Um, it's kind of depends on how quickly they can turn around, meeting times and everything. But I think maybe next Thursday, can we have some data from some surveys back from the high school and middle school parents and students? And then hopefully have a bit more information on M from M E A at that point as well.
I think that's very doable because I know what we did last week in the retreat and Nan worked with building principals on surveys. Um, and so they could take the existing questions and then add some additional for the information that's been requested this evening and the turnaround time on that could be pretty quick.
Sarah, I don't want to forget that you had something else.
Yes, um, now that I understand this better about how this A M P M thing works, because I I was confused about the, you'd always be one or the other. So will that mean that our, um, special education in our Metco stu-, some of our special education students that are now going, you know, to both cohorts and our, um, Metco students will get a full day essentially because they will stay in the morning. They'll have lunch and then so every day they'll get a full day of class.
The medical program, we're still working out, but that's, that was a draft. They we came up with them coming in for a full day. We we already have some students coming in for full days. So they're 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 in, they're in, you know, with teachers, they're at the office with me and Julia, um, taking their virtual classes. Um, it just works better for some students to be in class more or to be in the school.
We have, our medical students are here full day as it is because we have the virtual classes. There's no way they could get home in time to tune in. So we already have that arranged. And I spoke with Nan this morning, we spoke with Heidi. Um, so we're working on provisioning for that if we move forward.
Okay, so we can accommodate all those students. Um, and then the bus, like if we, we have, we do our own busing. We have limited buses. My sense is we don't rely as heavily on buses at the middle school and high school level as we do elementary. But is there going to be a problem with that? We now have an 11 o'clock drop off or pickup, an 11:30 drop off and then a 12 o'clock drop off somewhere else in town?
I don't believe we bus our seven to 12.
We do.
We don't at all.
No.
We do not.
Okay, okay. Even our special education students, none of them?
This year, no.
Okay.
And if we, if we do, it's such a small number that we can, we can.
We can make work.
And the bus guidance actually just changed greatly. They basically deemed buses to be completely safe.
Oh, I wasn't thinking about the spacing. It was more like getting to three spots in an hour. Um, okay, thanks.
All right. So it sounds to me, just to sort of recap this, like, we're obviously not making a decision for seven to 12 this evening, but that generally the committee is leaning towards adopting this, um, A M P M model for seven to 12. We want a little bit more data first. Um, we want some feedback from parents and we want some feedback from students before we actually make a determination.
I think I would reclassify my perception anyway. I would really like to see us get the kids in five, minimum five half days. That is my preference and that is what I'd like us to work towards. This is a plan B.
Yes, given no change to the six foot distance. If we cannot get that done, then this is where we're at for now.
Yes, but I really want.
Yes, agreed. Same, same.
Yes, I agree too.
Okay, so we will obviously continue to, um, keep this moving along and updated. Okay, so we will obviously continue to keep this moving along and updated and and getting information to everyone. All right. Thank you very much, Dan and Matt, and, you know, to all of the principals I see. I think everybody's still on here. So I appreciate that and all the, all the hard work that's been done.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's been a long night, too, a long week. So just, I appreciate all the work you guys have done. We all do.
All right, so that is the end of our learning model update. And then we have a fall sports two update on the agenda as well this evening.
Mr. Seglarsky, take it away.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. Just give you a quick update on how the winter went, and then we will get into the fall two. So between our coaches, athletic training staff, athletic department staff and administrative team, we were able to give our student athletes the opportunity to play sports they were, they were preparing for since last winter. We had a great turnout with registrations and were able to field the same amount of teams as we have in the past. Our student athletes worked hard, were competitive and continued to improve in their respective sports, and they should be very proud of their efforts. This winter certainly was more challenging than the fall season. We handled two close contact situations, managed three positive COVID tests, and implemented a detailed return to play policy for COVID positive tests. I think the plans, protocols and procedures we had in place from the get go allowed us to handle the situations we were dealt. And for the most part, we were able to have a successful season. And I know it's been a long night, but I'd like to take a minute to provide some quick highlights from the winter season as our term, our teams deserve to be recognized. Our boys hockey team went eight, four and one and had nice wins versus Danvers, Maskon, Winthrop. And I know Coach Wells was very happy with the team's efforts and attention to detail. Girls hockey went five, four and three. They did a really good job all season under first year head coach Brittany Smith. They lost Winthrop early in the season, five to one, and had a very exciting one, one tie with them to close out the season. Our boys basketball team went seven and five. They did a great job all season and battled hard every game. They had a great two point win versus Swamp Scott and two very exciting games versus Beverly. And I know Coach Giardi is really excited about the future of their program. Girls basketball went seven and five as well. They started their season with three tough losses, but went on to win seven of their last nine games. And had two hard fought wins versus Winthrop and Beverly. I know Coach Murray was very proud of the girls' efforts all season. Swim and dive had really nice work all season, especially since they had virtual meets and had to rely on each other to stay focused and excited. Coach Gert was so excited about the opportunity to swim, and we even broke a number of longstanding school records. And finally, gymnastics went one and five. They had excellent work all winter. They had some close meets with Danvers and Essex Tech and then a great win versus Salem and should be very proud of their efforts as well. All of our student athletes and coaches deserve extremely high praise for their flexibility, patience and desire to keep playing in a safe manner. I can't say enough about them and their efforts. Also, I need to give a shout out to our training staff and assistant A D Mark Army. Both are very thankless jobs, and without all of their help and attention to detail, we would not have had a season. Thank you very much for all your efforts. Moving forward to the fall two season, we'll be offering football, volleyball, indoor track and cheerleading. While we've done a great job sticking to the protocols given to us by the EEA and the MIAA, we know the challenges ahead of us will take a great amount of effort. We have our two most popular sports in the same season, and we'll do our best, as we always do, to keep our student athletes safe and on the field, track and court. I'd be happy to take any questions for the fall two or athletics moving forward.
David, did you raise your hand? Okay, um, I've got, I've got one. How many, how many students, so for fall, for this fall two, particularly the football program, but I guess, yeah, I guess football, how many students does that encompass, the, the full program?
Uh, right now for the fall two, we have two hundred and thirty athletes registered, seventy four of which are football players.
Okay, thanks. And for, I know, I know the fall one was, was very, very successful as far as mitigation and everything and, and COVID positives. For the, the one we just did.
The winter season?
Yes, thank you. There were, there was no, in, there was no transmission within teams.
Uh, there.
If you can't answer that, then you can just say that and I'll, I'll back off.
I'm gonna leave that one alone, I think.
Okay.
At best interest.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, Greg, can you remind us the date? So the start and end date for the season, when do games start, et cetera?
Sure. So ours fall two season started technically yesterday, and it goes through April twenty fifth. And then the spring season would start April twenty sixth after that. Games would start next week.
Okay, Sarah?
Um, who, when, you know, obviously when there's athletes on, you know, the field or on the court, um, their coaches are there and supervising to make sure that they have all the protocols, and there are a lot of protocols, I know. But when they're out, like, you know, you see the teams running by or whatever, who supervises to make sure that they're do, they're following the protocols?
When they're outside the building, you mean?
Like, yeah, like, you know, if, if they're going to do a long run or something like that.
So our coaches will go out with them. If, for any of our distance runners, like for track, we just started yesterday. Our distance coach will go with them.
Okay.
Inside, they're inside here on the track, or they're gonna move to the outside track as soon as we're able to. And our coaches will all be over there, our whole staff.
Okay, all right. So the football, the seventy four, is that like varsity JV?
Grand wide, it's nine, nine through twelve.
Okay.
Seventeen currently for freshmen, maybe eighteen. And the rest would be kind of JV varsity combination.
Okay, so they're not all like practicing at the same time?
No, no, we'll have it separated where freshmen practice first, and then there'll be a little overlap where they're finishing up in the varsity and JV are warming up and stretching, and then they'll, freshmen get off and the other guys stay.
Okay, and so are they inside right now or outside?
They were inside yesterday and today, but they'll move outside tomorrow as the, the turf is cleared up enough for us to get up.
Okay, so they'll be practicing outside and playing, obviously outside.
Obviously.
Right. But the other three sports are inside, right? Cheer, well, cheerleading is kind of outside.
Kind of both, and then as soon as it's nice enough to get tracked out to the track over at Village, we will send them out there right away.
Okay, okay, thanks.
One more question. Just, Greg, how do the spectators work? I mean, again, we've talked a lot about changing in science and where we were from the fall. So especially where, you know, for football and, and cheer, where we can be outside, how does the spectators, spectators work?
So unless things change in our next NEC athletic director meeting, we're going to stay with the two spectators per home athlete. And that has to be either a parent or household member.
And then nothing for away, right?
Nothing for away things, no.
Um, Greg, how many other districts are, are all of the other districts playing now? Because I know I've read an article about Lynn recently, but it sounds like much of Lynn has switched conferences.
Yeah, so the, the Lynn schools are, they joined up with the Greater Boston League. Somerville, Everett, Medford, those types of schools over, over there that used to be with us. And they are kind of having custom dates for their season because they were able to play now where they weren't able to up until yesterday. But otherwise, everyone else in our league is, is playing the same sports.
Okay, so then they're all in on fall two.
Yep.
Okay, and all of these, all of these are fully masked?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, our public is like able to ask.
No, the public can't ask questions. Sorry, there's time for public comment afterwards. And then so we'll, we'll allow people to, to speak, but then you can also email us.
Um, I can take emails and phone calls too, if need be as well later on.
Thanks, Greg.
So the football programs obviously are our largest program, it sounds like. What is the largest number of P, of students and staff that if there was a positive in our largest program, that would be put in the quarantine?
Say that again, sorry, I cut off for a second there.
What, like, I'm assuming football is our largest program. What is, you know?
Close.
Okay, so if there was a positive, what in our largest program, just to give us an idea, how many staff and students would be put into quarantine?
For a sport like football would depend on when it happened because they, they practice. Their practice plans are different each day, leading up to their games. Whereas track, it would be, it would be pretty easy to kind of separate their pods out because they are separated by distance, by sprinters, by throwers, by high jumpers, et cetera. Football is a little bit different where you have probably your starting eleven on either side. They would be going against each other in practice for the most part together. And whereas other kids would kind of be on the sideline who are still learning plays, who are still trying to work their way in as, as maybe a sophomore or a junior waiting for a starting role.
So we're not quarantining the whole team the way we seem to have in the past?
Would, it would really depend on the situation when if something were to happen, like even for, for volleyball, we have enough separation like between our coaches, uh, where they probably wouldn't have to be in quarantine. Again, we, it would just really determine case by case. I know it doesn't really answer your question fully, but that's the, the best I can give you right now.
But I don't think it sounds like, so if our track, track is our biggest program, it, we're not going to quarantine the entire track team.
Likely not.
Right, because they're not, they're not, it's not like basketball where they're all together, because they're doing their separate things.
Correct. And even right now, we have, we only have half the kids in for track right now at a time, so half one day, half the next day. And then they're separated as well after that.
Okay.
So just to throw out an idea, it, since extracurriculars are an opt in, I'm gonna, can we require them to agree to the pool testing program? And pool test our teams?
Can look into that. I don't know that you can compel someone to participate, but certainly worth reaching out to Amanda Rivers to reach out to Project Beacon to see if that is a possibility. I don't know the answer to that right now.
I don't know either. I just thought where it's not, you know, it's like public education is a right, like playing a sport is not a right. Um, it's, it's a privilege and an option. I didn't know. I just, I didn't, the answer may be no legally, but thought.
Yeah, I can look into it. I, I, I think Salem may do it. I can reach out to their athletic director and see what, what he has to say, but I'm not, I'm not positive.
So in the past, we've voted to support the athletic program moving forward. So that, you know, in my head, we would continue that this evening. So do I have a motion to support fall two athletics to move forward?
So moved.
Emily moved.
Good.
Megan second. Anything else to be said?
Yeah, and, and thanks again to Greg and the, and the coaches and the staff for, and parents who have had to, you know, limit attendance at events and make sure we're adhering to all of these best practices that we know. So to make, to make it possible. So thanks to everybody.
Yeah, I agree, David. I mean, just kind of like the actual sport is a team effort, so is kind of get, you know, making it all happen in COVID. So I just appreciate all the work everyone's done and again, the flexibility. I think it's worthwhile looking into the testing piece. I think Sarah makes a good point. But I obviously support the, the athletics moving forward. I think everyone's done a really good job in following the protocols. And while we have had COVID cases, I think because we've got the protocols in place, we've been able to manage those. So I'm confident, Greg, in your ability to keep that going.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm, I am in support of this, and I think, I think it speaks to a broader level of support for, again, this push for in, more in-person learning, in my opinion. I quite frankly struggle with the idea of having football move forward. And football to me is, there's, there's like a piece with football because it is so contact oriented. Where I know that, that it is, you know, a voluntary thing and that, you know, these, these, the kids that are doing it know what the risks are and everything. But at the same time, we've, we've run our sports very successfully with, with, with the mitigation. And, and even in our CDC guidance that just came out, as complex as it is, our community is supported in moving things forward and further in person. And the biggest hesitance that they had, and I, I would, I will preface and say I do have a little bit of qualms with that guidance. But the biggest hesitance they have, even in communities like ours, where they're saying that more in-person learning can be happening, even at the seven to twelve level, is that sports is another thing. And so again, I think that our data supports us proceeding forward with our sports programs. And I think that same data supports us moving forward in getting, in returning our students to more in-person at less distance, quite frankly.
Yeah, I think very well said, Sarah.
Um, Greg, you, you, you're comfortable looking into the pool, like asking if we can do that? Because I think that that might qualm some of those concerns in the community that Sarah kind of just talked about a little bit.
Yeah, I can work with, with the pool testing and with Dr. Bucky about that moving forward. We can, he and I can, he can, I can discuss that for sure.
There was, there was a testing question that came up earlier in the MEA conversation as well, so we, we can, we can follow up on, on both of those pieces. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call is Sarah Gold, yes? Megan Taylor? Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris? And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right. Have fun.
Thanks. Hey, I, I forgot to mention the ski team. They did a really, I'm sorry for ski team and coaches. Guys did an awesome job, got to the mountain a couple of times a week. Sorry about that. Didn't mean to forget you and keep you off of my update.
All right, great. Thanks, Greg, and thanks for sticking around and filling us in. All right, so that brings us up to public comment. I've got a couple of hands raised already. So if anybody else wants to make public comment, it is, you know, pretty late. We do have another meeting with public comment again on Thursday. And so if, you know, if people want to take a, a day to sort of process this and, and then speak eventually at, at that meeting, I would encourage that. So I just would, would ask people that if they keep it short to maybe like a minute or two comments this evening. Because again, it is, it is getting pretty late, so. Susan, you have your hand up.
Hi, thank you so much. I will be brief and just first thank everyone for all their hard work and so respectfully coming together to hash these things out. I'm a parent of a high schooler who's in hybrid, but has not been in very much due to concerns about spread. And it's worked out and well. We look forward to getting back into the building soon, we hope, as the numbers go down. As I'm hearing the proposal for the high school and know, and I really do appreciate that more information is needed from parents and, and kids about how they're feeling about everything. One thing I just want to point out is that I'm, I know that a lot of this discussion has come up because of mental health concerns and the feeling that being in the building more would be helpful in resolving some of that. As a mental health clinician myself, I'm not so sure that I believe that's the cure, although it might be for some kids, maybe not for everyone. And I'm wondering, as we're in this process of navigating how to increase in-person time in school, if there's a possibility for the students who are really needing to come in sooner to have that, like in the afternoons during that combined cohort time, when there are already some students there, like whether they're in the Metco program or maybe they are already identified as having services so that they don't have to wait as long. And at the same time, I'm hoping that a very important part of the conversation moving forward is what to do about the either fully remote kids or the cohort of kids who don't, whose families choose not to have them come in, you know, who, who opt out. Because at the high school, that is a completely different ballgame and could create a mental health crisis for those kids who are already very, very accustomed to their schedules. You know, for example, my student knows every Tuesday and Friday that he's going to have class from eight to two thirty, whether that's in person, whether that's remote. That is predictable, routine, structure. That is a really important element in our lives. And so if it turns out that he had to go remote, that would completely upend his schedule and put him and other kids like him in crisis. So I just think that if we're looking at that piece, it has to be that we need an identified plan for everyone. You know, so that we're not trading one set of circumstances and problems for another. So that's all.
Thank you, Susan. Can I actually get your last name and address as well?
Sure. It's Shiowitz and it's 25 Harrahford Road.
Thank you very much. All right, Kristen Pratt. Can you state your address as well?
Sure. Kristen Pratt, 48 Pleasant Street, Marblehead. I guess I just had two quick comments, but before I make that, I just want to thank the principals. I really think that their candid and authentic comments tonight were excellent and it made me feel much more comfortable. I still feel a little bit cautiously optimistic. I'm not sure. I feel like this is 100% for my little ones until I hear it from the teachers, but I'm going to stay positive and hope that things go more positively than last time. The two points that I wanted to make is that was really around public comment. I noticed that tonight it was saved till after, which I think was quite effective. But at the next agenda, it's now before. And I think there's some concern around around parents being able to get feedback effectively. I mean, I can tell you, I sent an email to the school committee and the superintendent, and I never heard back. So I'm not comfortable not relying on that channel. And normally, when you have to make the comment in advance, you kind of run the risk of either being redundant or hoping it gets answered. And if it doesn't, then you wait two weeks or you hope it's in an email. And I don't know why it took me so long to think of this, but there are applications out there that allow people to submit comments. And there are other meetings in town where you can ask questions during the meeting. But have you looked at the virtual polling functionality in Zoom or other applications that would allow participants to submit questions? And for other participants to vote and prioritize those so they could be addressed during the meeting? So that's my one comment. The second is really just that I was stunned after my last public comment and the reaction I got from people and so many people reached out to me and I guess I have two two just sub points on this. One is that there are a lot of people who are not comfortable speaking at this meeting, and I don't think the last meeting did anything to help that. And a lot of people thanked me for coming forward to speak. So I think anything you can do to further encourage it would be lovely. And then the second thing is, one of the specific things people came back to comment on was, oh, my gosh, yes, if lunch is the problem, I will volunteer for the job. I will apply for the job. I will get queried. And I know that's a process and it might take, you know, a month to work out. But I just want to reiterate that beyond this initial phase of the four hours or looking even into the next fall, there are parents that are willing to step up and help. And, you know, I would encourage you to, I don't know, if anybody wants to reach out to me to take advantage of that, I'd be happy to try to put together a group of people. Because I really think that might be something that's not as complicated to solve. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. And I'll I'll see if I can find any info on some of the other things that you talked about and how other districts may be using them.
Yeah, yeah. And I can share application names. I use them all the time for work.
Thanks. Pat Noonan.
Thanks, Sarah. Patrick Noonan, 15 Beverly Avenue. First, I want to acknowledge the positive developments of tonight, that our youngest children will be going back to school five days a week in March. Dr. Bucky and the principals, I applaud you for your efforts. And I thank you for listening to the overwhelming majority of parents and students as expressed at our prior meeting. Genuinely, thank you so much. My comment is directed at the five committee members. The return date, as presented by Dr. Bucky at the outset of tonight, was for March 1st for K to three and March 8th for four to six. For reasons that frankly escape me, you seem to have pushed this timeline out until March 15th. Where is the fierce urgency that you all showed three weeks ago? No educator or administrator has asked for more time at this meeting. Sarah Gold, you noted comments you heard at a meeting at which some teachers asked for more time. What about the many teachers who did not speak at this meeting, presumably because they were fine with the March 1st and 8th proposal? You also noted some parents may need more time to adjust schedules and juggle their nanny scheduling. But we all know that if you pushed a poll out to parents tonight, over 80% would want this done ASAP, not three weeks from now. And Megan, you expressed your view at the last meeting, that the timeline for reintroduction be as tight as possible. And now you seem to have said, well, it's just two more weeks. No big deal. It would be one thing if Dr. Bucky's original proposal was to begin on the 15th. Instead, you, the committee members, seem to have taken it upon yourselves to push the timeline out by another two weeks. As grateful as I am for the actions of Dr. Bucky, our principals in the district, I am baffled by our committee members' actions tonight. Labor management relations only work when both sides zealously represent their constituencies. The committee members should be should have been asking why our grade four to six children could not go back on March 4, March 1st, not looking to move the return date further back into March. The teachers have wonderful representation through the MEA. It is long past time for you to do your job to represent the parents and taxpayers of this community. And after one full calendar year of our children's absence from school, I wish you would start doing it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Joan Miller.
Sarah. Hi, Joan Miller, 34 Nogas Ave. I'm an eighth grade inclusion teacher at MBMS and president of the Marblehead Education Association. I'd like to speak tonight on behalf of the teachers in the Marblehead Public Schools. Our staff has been working tirelessly tirelessly during this global pandemic to make Marblehead students' education the best that it can be during these unprecedented times. The Marblehead Public Schools team of educators and administrators have worked collaboratively to ensure both the students, employees, and Marblehead community remain safe as we all navigate this challenging year. From our youngest pre-kindergarten learners to our graduating seniors, we want nothing more than to return to a consistent, in-person, safe educational experience as soon as possible. As teachers, we recognize the toll that this pandemic is taking on our families. Many of us are also parents and are trying to navigate the situation for our own children. As teachers, we have historically advocated for additional mental health resources for Marblehead students long before the pandemic. It is now more apparent than ever, the work and the resources that will be needed to help our students as we navigate to this new normal. We want to make sure that additional in-person learning is done with the best interest of students, staff, and the community in mind. We believe in a thoughtful and well-intentioned plan that puts health and safety as a priority. Marblehead has successfully been in a hybrid model since returning to school in the fall with no in-school transmission, according to our lead nurse. We want to make sure that we do not jeopardize that at this point. The MEA remains committed to working with the administration to ensure a safe return for more in-person learning as we move forward. We, as teachers, also look forward to getting a vaccine in the very near future. And we appreciate any support that you, as school committee members, can give us in order to help make that happen. I would caution us as we talk about the older students to remember that when it comes to the virus, they transmit it as adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Blair Nelson.
Hey, thank you so much. It's really nice to hear Joan's comments and that we're all in the same boat together here in terms of trying to get our students back as soon in full time as soon as as possible.
Blair, can you just state your address real quick?
Yeah, I'm at 100 Elm. The, so tonight's been tremendous news. It's really exciting to hear how we're moving forward. And and John is completely right. Many of us do think it is a little too little and too late. We've been asked several times this evening for the perspective of the school committee, understand what parents think. You know, here's here's one person's view. In terms of case sets, you know, we can do more. You know, now we're going to go to school, finish at 12 o'clock, come home, eat lunch, and then jump on a Zoom call with the same people that we're sharing a classroom with in the morning. Why? There's nothing magical about eating lunch at school. If we can eat a snack, we can eat lunch. If it's getting warmer, we can sit outside, sit on a bucket, whatever. Parents are here to help. This is not a showstopper. Let's just go back for full days, full, full days. It shouldn't really take us a month to figure that, figure this out. The second theme, and you heard that really strongly from from Patrick just now as well, is let's get as many students back as soon as possible. If any of the schools can do one March, let's do one March or the second of March or the 10th of March. To be clear, we want to go back as soon as possible. And finally, while I don't have a child in the seven to 12 program, we clearly need to get them back way earlier. Crazy idea. In terms of seven and 12, can we find a model where the parent, where the students, sorry, are at three feet, but the teachers keep six feet? It just feels crazy that we could play football and basketball, but we can't find a way to have these students in school full time. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Blair. Alexandra Collet.
Hi there, I'm 15 Hillside Ave. So I'm actually a senior at the high school and you guys have mentioned just getting some feedback from the students. And so as someone that's experienced what the high school is like in a normal year and as well as the other schools, I really just want to say like, thank you to all the teachers and the staff. I think everyone's been doing like the best that they can do, but it is still like a ton to handle as teenagers and as, you know, just young adults in general. And specifically, I want to say thank you to Mr. Bauer and Mr. Fox during this meeting for keeping the students as the priority and keeping both teacher and student well-being in mind. It's really comforting to hear that, you know, we're being thought of and that, you know, we really, people are just trying to do the best for us. As well as talking about like the surveys and the thoroughness about how they're looked into. I've answered every survey that, you know, we've been issued, and I don't really feel like the requests or concerns have been upheld very much. You know, we get preached about like social emotional check-ins and social emotional health. And I think as valuable as those check-ins are, I don't think they're doing as much as the staff is counting on them to. And I think hopefully having more in-person hours will help with that. But I think just maybe more frequent check-ins or something like that would definitely be beneficial. And then just the last thing I'd like to add is, as someone who would be exposed firsthand to the three-feet distancing change, adding that AM PM schedule, I don't really see why there's a need to change the six-foot distance because that has been what is been keeping me like feeling safe going into school. And I think changing that would, you know, push a lot more kids to go to remote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexandra. We appreciate that. Kristen Zero.
Hi, Sarah. Thank you. Kristen Exaro, 16 Merrill Street Road, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I think you're on in two different places somehow, but we can hear you and see you.
I am. My internet's not very stable, so I didn't want to lose and try to get back on. I just wanted to thank you for extending the time to go back in. As a teacher who's been on this roller coaster road since last March, I feel like sometimes all our voices aren't heard. And tonight I just wanted to express that I do have concerns about going back in with 20 kids in my classroom and two adults. I'm concerned about my kindergarten kids who I feel like have been so successful. I know they're happy, they're learning, assessments are telling me that. But when I think that I will not have or be six feet, not have that capability, I feel threatened. And I feel like although that our numbers are down, I feel like our numbers are down because we have had such great safe protocols. I think that's why we didn't have a spread because we were a hybrid and we took very, you know, big precautions. So I just wanted to express that for me, as a teacher in the school district, I wholeheartedly don't want anything more than to have my kids all together. But I want it to be safe and successful. I want it to be that when I have 20 kids in my classroom, they are all learning the same way they did when they were 10, that they all are getting the same quality and they are all successful. Thank you. And thank you. I look forward to what will happen next.
Thanks, Kristen. Theo Schimmel.
Hi, Theo Schimmel, 24 Thompson Road. I'm also a senior at the high school this year. And I would also like to speak out against the three-foot suggestion, social distancing. I think once you reach that three-foot point, you're really just back to regular school. We're really never sitting closer than three feet together. I mean, and I would ask the committee right now, who's in the library, how many of you are actually sitting closer than six feet apart right now? I don't think any of you. So I would like to see, you know, a return to in-person learning that places the focus on what we can actually do safely instead of spending the next two to three months, you know, dreaming about this ideal world where we can go back to having three feet apart and letting the current hybrid situation that is what is going to happen for the next month and a half of the high school, at least, letting that fall by the wayside.
Thank you very much, Theo. All right, I actually don't have any other hand raised.
I would like to go. Thank you. I am Anne Simko.
Okay, no one is, no one is holding you back. You didn't have your hand raised, so I have no ability to know that you wanted to speak. So please state your name and address calmly.
Hi, I'm Anne Simko. I couldn't raise my hand because I am on my phone after I was kicked out of this meeting from my computer. I am a sophomore at the high school. I live on 77 Garfield Street. I am a sophomore at the high school. And I would like to say that I think that with the three-feet distancing and regarding to that, there is no magic number that says six feet is the ultimate, like distancing. Like, there's nothing that makes six feet all that much safer than five feet. So I think we could do three feet. I just think, you know, this is politics, this is school board, everything moves at the pace of a snail. And I don't know, I mean, I've been waiting here for three hours to speak and just like that's the pace that this is going. And I don't know, I feel like you got, like, with the hybrid schedule, it's most likely going to last out the remainder of the school year for the high school. And as a high school student, that really disappoints me a lot. And I feel like I am disappointed in you. And and I think that a lot of the teachers and the people who are represented here, the people that have waited three hours to talk are not representing the majority because they are the ones who are the most scared. And it's the people who are the most scared who are waiting for three hours to speak. And maybe a few parents who are really upset about their young children. But I don't think that the majority of people are going to wait three hours through this long school board committee to speak. But the majority just wants to go back in person as much as possible. Does not really care as much about the three feet. And I've been talking to my fellow students. And they are just a little bit perplexed at why are we still in this hybrid model that is super difficult for teachers, super difficult for students? And I don't know, I'm just disappointed in what you guys, the administration have have done. Like, I think that there could be a lot more that we could be doing. I have some ideas. I will send you an email later. I think you could be doing a lot more. Like, one idea, I don't know, I'm not going to say it because I am going on a long rant here, but yeah. I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Lauren Adriano.
Hi, thank you so much, School Committee. Dr. Bucky, want to give a huge shout out and thanks to the principals and A.D. Savarsky for making athletics work and improved in-school learning. Congrats for the K to six crew. I happen to land in the seven to 12 bucket for my three children. Still seems far from where it's it's a it's a great improvement. There, I almost don't want to comment on it because it seems that there'll be another several iterations before we really have a the details laid out. And I appreciate the hard work going into it. My biggest question is around the comments. I think Joan Miller, hopefully I pronounce your name correctly. I I am so supportive of the teachers. In fact, I almost like get excited when I hear my daughter's middle school teachers teach during the day to them, the effort, the energy, everything they put into it. So awesome. Where I'm struggling is understanding what constitutes a safe return? What what exactly is that? We're a year into this. Excuse me, I've seen no metrics on that. And I am so sorry if I've missed something. But if we can get some transparency and clarity from Joan and the team on what will be a safe return? Is that vaccinations? Is that herd immunity? Is it six feet, even beyond that? You know, what whether, what are you, what is being suggested as considered to be safe in private schools across the country and in many public schools? We've started to see what their safe return is. And for the seven through 12 crew, it's just still an enigma for me. So if there is a way that something can presented, be presented with some detail on one of the next sessions, I would really greatly appreciate that. Sorry, trying to avoid a coughing fit in the middle of coronavirus.
We cannot appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Emily Doitt.
Hi. Thank you to everyone. There started off.
Hi, thank you to everyone. They started off with such positive vibes, and it just kind of, I'm sorry to say, just really went downhill for a lot of us. And I know you're hearing the same voices, but those of us that are speaking up are representing a lot of people who, as mentioned tonight, might not be comfortable speaking up, and that includes other parents and other students, children. We're just baffled by the mixed messages out there. We don't understand the science metrics that are being used by the school committee. How can a bus that Sarah Gold just deemed perfectly safe and sports, including an entire basketball season my son just completed, and now football about to resume, with complete disregard to six-feet distancing, travel games away, camaraderie on buses and at games, which I fully support, by the way. I'm only spotlighting it because we don't understand how one set of rules can work for a bus or team sports, but not apply to our kids being in the classroom physically. I also want to say thank you to Sarah Fox for pointing out that this is a whole student body issue, and I really appreciate that she used that word. Our students at the higher grades, as you just heard from a very brave student, thank you, Ann, are in trouble and are suffering. And I know you've heard this from me before, and you've heard it from other students. And I really want to keep that whole student body phrase in the mix, please. We don't understand what's going on. We're reeling from data released today by not only the governor, the school commissioner of education, Dr. Bucky and Desi, and yet the school committee members are not representing what those results of those meetings or the students or the parents' voices. And I know you're working hard, but please, we're all beyond bewildered. You don't answer emails, Sarah Gold. So to say that that's a transparent way of communication is false. We're just feeling like the rug was pulled out from under us. You promised going back to school, and now you're changing dates, you're revisiting data. It's like this meeting, what was it for? Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Ruby Veed.
Hi, my address is 16 Lincoln Park. And I'm a senior at the high school, and I know that we've heard from a couple other seniors. And I just want to first off, say thank you to the other seniors who have spoken up and the parents who have spoken up and mentioned the concerns of the kids and also the concerns coming from the teacher's side. Thank you to Joan Miller, and especially thank you to Mr. Bauer, Mr. Fox, because I think when we talk about, you know, the return to school and the return to sports, the kids definitely get lost in the mix. And I think that we tend to forget that, you know, the high schoolers are like, you know, like we're citizens, obviously, like we read the news, we're educated, and we have opinions. And this is, you know, not just like the health and safety of teachers and kids, but like we're people. And I don't think it would be fair to discount the words coming from students just because we're younger, or maybe our information isn't trusted as well as it coming from an adult. And so I guess what I'm just saying is that I think that while it's easy for the kids to get lost in the situation, I think that it's really important that we try to remember, like, what we're here for, you know, educating our kids and creating adults that are going to go off and make our community better. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. And Don Johns. Don, if you want to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Just building on what Lauren and Emily have said, and I just feel like at least I am beating my head against the wall. We all agree, it seems like you, Sarah Gold, Megan, say that the kids should be back in school at least the five mornings, and we need to do away with this three feet. Science is saying that we can, and we all seem to be in agreement, yet nothing is happening. And then when we say things, then we're against the teachers. So it is the union that is saying they won't go back unless it's six feet. So how do we get past this? Are they really renegotiating, like Dr. Bucky says they are? I mean, enough, or just tell us exactly what they need to get back into the school. Is it vaccines? Is it, I mean, I don't know what it is. So I just feel like we're going around in circles. That's it.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Scott Solberg.
Yeah, thank you. 1 Ramsey Road, Marblehead, Scott Solberg. So I just, I'm really excited to see so many of our high school students speaking up and just the quality of the voice. And it's just a great testament that we have some amazing students with a great passion. I know, Sarah, you've been inundated with emails. We had 450 people on here, so to hear that you may not have responded to one or two, it seems relevant that you guys are being really inundated with comments and feedback, and want to appreciate that. I do appreciate, John, the science that's going into this, and I know it's a slow and it feels like it's going too slow. But at the same time, I also recognize, being on the reopening committee, that we are at the cutting edge, that you are leading the other superintendents to say, we need to start pushing on this. And so we, as a community, are now at the front end. And I know it feels slow, and we feel like it should have happened yesterday, but it's just such a scary situation. And I want to appreciate the fact that we really are having these conversations, and it feels like we're ready to move forward. I would love for it to happen March 1st. That would be fantastic. And I understand that there's a lot of complexities, that we need to get some parent feedback and figure out all of that. But hopefully, we can get a compromise between the March 1st and the April 1st, and hopefully, we can get this thing going. But I think we're all moving in that direction to get our kids back in the classrooms.
Thanks, Scott. All right, I do not have any more hands raised, so I will adjourn us at 10:18. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Sarah, thank you for booking this extra meeting. I can't imagine if we tack this onto Thursday.